I don't think he's not.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. It's six thirty. Our. We have two of our members out of town, but we do have seven, so we do have a quorum. So all the other commission members are here. In looking at our agenda, I would like to suggest that we move the agenda number D to the end of our cases, since I says we've got three or four that will move very quickly and that will allow us to have time to deal with that one. Any other comment or suggestion about the agenda? If not, could I have a motion to change the agenda to do that? Second? Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Thank you. So we will be moving number D to follow case F. So that should allow the others to move quickly out of the way. All right, we need to review the minutes from the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Okay, does anyone see any need to make a change or correction to the minutes? Thank you. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved as submitted. Now, as always, on the planning commission public hearings, we will have each case presented to us by our county planner, Ligon. He will answer any questions from the planning commission. In the case where there's an applicant present who wishes to address the planning commission, they will have a chance to do that. And following that, if there is any public comment on the case, there will be time for that. All right, let's begin with case number S dash ten dash twenty-two dash twenty-two. Homes by Yoder Construction LLC has applied to subdivide an existing eight acre R one limited residential zone parcel. The subdivision would create two new parcels and one residue parcel. The new parcels would be two point two acres and two point four acres, and the residue parcel would be three point three acres. The subject parcel has not been subdivided in the previous ten years, and future subdivision rights of said parcels would be exhausted. The subject eight acre parcel does not contain a postal address, but is located on Burnt Tree Way, Route six eighty-five, Orange, Virginia. Parcel is identified on Madison County's tax map as fifty-eight dash seventy-one. All right, Ligon, anything to add to that?
No, I think B dot's letter is in there and Emily is working on the health department end, but otherwise everything's in by right and it looks like it will be in order by October fifth.
All right, so again, we're looking at something without the health department approval in hand. All right. Does anyone have a question for Ligon? Yes, Mike.
That's right, because it's R, it's actually R one, right.
Is R one not thirty-five?
I think, is it, is it? Let me see. Was it not thirty-five? Oh, okay, I might have accidentally put twenty-five, but does it show thirty-five on the actual survey?
No, but in the R one ordinance, it says thirty-five.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a note to say something to the applicant. Yeah, I just think she goes out and visits the site, so she just has a lot of, puts them in a queue, and I mean, she, she got the one for the the last one we approved, so yeah, it should come before October, I believe.
Okay, so by the time this comes before the board supervisors, we should have that in hand.
I hope so.
Okay. Any other question for Ligon? Is the applicant present? If not, is there any public comment on this case? Apparently not. Everybody's here for something else. All right, in that case, reviewing case number S dash ten dash twenty-two dash twenty-three. Gilnacki Land Corporation LLC has applied to subdivide an existing fifty-nine point nine acre A one agriculture zone parcel. The subdivisions, three new parcels and one residue parcel. The new parcels would be fifteen acres, fifteen acres and seventeen acres, and the residue parcel would be thirteen point one acres. The subject parcel has not been divided in the previous ten years, and future subdivision rights on each parcel would be exhausted for a minimum of ten years from the date of recordation. The subject fifty-nine point nine acre parcel does not contain a postal address, but is located on Emmett Road, Route six forty-four, Etlin, Virginia. Parcel is identified on Madison County's tax map as fifteen dash ten. Ligon, any additional for that?
No, same thing. V dot has a letter in there in the packet, and we're just waiting on the health department to confirm that they've checked the drain fields and everything's filed with them, but again, it should be here by the fifth or in or around there.
All right, does anyone have a question for Ligon?
I guess I got a question.
Yes.
If those letters don't come, at least case is taken off the docket.
No, I think we even amended our code that we could provisionally approve it. I mean, some communities don't even require that health department being, I, I, I look at our code again, but I think for new subdivisions, we just by standard have asked that they have a perk site, but it's, I mean, you can surely subdivide without it. I mean, if you're going to build a house, you gotta have it, but we amended our code, was it a year ago, that said we could give it provisional approval, then when it comes in, you know, we'll just sign off then like I did with Mr. Jenkins. So I wouldn't lose lost sleep over it. We should get it.
All right, yes, yes, Mike.
So Ligon, are both of these and the previous one, who's going to be one of the first ones that go onto private road?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Yoder's just submitted his private road agreement today. The other one, there's only one shared drive. You know, I don't know if he would have adopted it by then. I guess for shared drives, we could require it, but we really are looking more at the. Right. Yoder's already done his. The other one on, on two sharing a driveway, usually, you know, the applicant regardless, you know, what we might require, I don't believe it's required for two slots subdivision at Park Sherrill's Road, but usually the, the seller will provide some sort of a shared agreement between the two. I don't know if we'll have one for that one, but we'll have one for Yoder because I got today.
All right, I'm looking at parcel B on this, if I'm looking at it correctly. That has no road frontage that I can see is, and I, yeah, and I don't see, I see a proposed entrance on parcel D on a road. Coming in off of A. Okay.
Yeah, so one of the lots, that one back in the, I'll have to look at it again, but.
Okay, so that's actually, he's showing an existing entrance on A, a proposed, an existing entrance on C. So this is apparently going to serve parcel B. Is that correct? Serves parcel, okay. And there's also shown a proposed entrance on the road for parcel D, so this would actually, if I'm reading this correctly, he's only serving one lot with that proposed new entrance.
Yeah, I think in my letter to V dot, it kind of describes it right there in the middle, how many entrances.
That'll put three entrances right there along that stretch of Emmett Road. Are they far enough apart?
Well, V dot seems to think it's generally acceptable.
Well, I think we have regulations for the distance between entrances too. I know we do on twenty-nine. I think we do on other roads. I think so. I can't tell from this map, but I just want to make sure, that's all. Okay, any other question on this? And so we're in the same situation. By next, by the board meeting, we should expect to have the health department approval in place.
I hope. But again, I sent it back in August, so a few weeks ago, so I'm hoping it will be there by.
Maybe, all right.
Definitely maybe.
All right, any other question for Ligon? Is the applicant here? Nobody wishes to speak with the applicant, okay. Any public comment on this case? Thank you. All right, case number RZ dash ten dash twenty-two dash twenty-four. Mr. Juan Pablo Leon has applied, applied to rezone a roughly point seven five acre portion of a three point seven five acre parcel from A one agriculture to B one business with conditions. If rezoned, the applicant would subsequently subdivide the roughly point seven five acre B one zoned area, creating a separate parcel. The residual three acres would be remain zoned A one. The proposed B one zone parcel would be utilized for an automotive sales lot, and the parcel's two existing dwellings would be converted into five two hundred and fifty square foot offices with up to five individual vehicle dealers operating from these offices. Each dealer would have no more than ten vehicles on the site per dealer for a maximum of fifty vehicles on the parcel at any given time. All vehicles would be contained or parked in an enclosed or fenced in area with a visual barrier. The subject parcel's two existing dwellings are addressed as five five three Curtly Road and one oh one James City Road, Revere, Virginia. Parcel is identified on Madison County's tax map as thirty-three dash eleven.
So I know Mr. Leon was in, I guess, a month ago and gave us a pretty thorough explanation of what his business entails. And we have since sat down, kind of looked at different ways in which, you know, this could possibly achieve in a very limited capacity. It was determined that rezoning a portion of the, of the parcel, you know, in an ideal world, I think a special use permit would probably be the easier route. But since there are some questions about number of uses on a parcel, given that B one doesn't have a minimum lot size, we felt that this would be the best route to go. So it is a limited rezoning, a conditional rezoning. You can see the letter that Mr. Leon and I sat down and worked on last week. He's understanding that these conditions would be restriction on the property. It'd be limited to this sort of unique business, niche business. That's a car dealership, but in reality, it's more of a internet sort of, and as he explained last month, where customers come from his service shop, which I believe is Manassas. He would have these dealers there, and all cars would be parked in this fenced in area. That would have sort of a visual barrier, barriers. You can see the visual example in the proffer letter. So it's not a, and I was talking to V dot today, they have reviewed it, he met him out there. They are comfortable with a, what we call a low volume commercial entrance that would just be fifty or less cars a day. I don't think it's going to be anywhere near fifty cars a day going out there. As the nature of the business can be more of an internet driven business where if he has a car, he can send people out to come to the site from his online sales. So I'm pretty comfortable with the conditions that we've written. The only thing that I've thought of is maybe, since this is, you know, we still have until October fifth, is potentially, we could add a condition that's, that states something, if it's inoperable for a year, then he would, you know, abandon this parcel and just collapse it back into the, the, the A, A one parcel. That is a, maybe one thing that I kind of thought of that could happen. You know, the B one in that area, if you look around and zoom out, and I'll do it on my report, I'm going to do a little more thorough report for next Friday, but there are some, kind of some spots of B one along Curtly Road. I understand, I've talked to several neighbors and, you know, I mean, the, the idea, I think when you hear B one business, but it's sort of like with our Craigsville, this is a very narrow proposed use with, in this case, I think a lot of very specific conditions that if not followed, you know, he can't operate. I mean, he's even proffered away signage, he's not looking to light anything, no things blowing in the wind. It's again, a niche business, and from what I can tell, work with Mr. Leon, he's very pleasant to work with and wants to, you know, just operate a very small niche business and is totally comfortable with the conditions that he's given to us, and I think it gives us a lot of enforcement to make sure we know what's going to be there. And that's sort of where we are right now.
Okay, any question for Ligon? Yes, yes, please. Identify yourself and speak on the microphone.
Hi, good evening. So the work that we'll be doing as far as paperwork, it will be mainly through internet email, and so at the point of delivery of the vehicle, that's also where we could go ahead and sign off on the purchase of the vehicle. The vehicles are purchased from auction matched with the interested client, and the vehicle is sent directly to the repair facility. It does not arrive at our location here in Leon. And once it's repaired, the vehicle is delivered to the client. Now, if the client would like to take delivery here at our office, it would not be an overnight stay of the vehicle. It would just be meeting there at that moment, hand the keys, do the paperwork, and then off the client goes, and so do we. Back to our main repair facility in Manassas. Does that answer the question?
I guess my concern here is if we're going to do business in Madison, and there's going to be five more dealers, four more dealers beside itself. I want to make sure that the paper trail leads to Madison County where we get the tax dollars.
Oh, yes. Yes, correct.
That's my concern.
Yes, sir, no, all the way, and our, well, as far as the property tax goes, that would follow the buyer of the vehicle.
But the sale that the money is made on the property is made on the cars or whatever, I want to make sure if it's made in Madison County, it's paid in Madison County.
Yep, that would be fair and correct, yes, sir, because Madison's welcoming us in, and we also want to be right by Madison if we're doing business out of Madison. Yes, sir.
Okay, so basically then, the Madison site would be the main office for this part of your business?
Yes, for myself and the other.
The Manassas shop, the repair shop is like a separate.
Separate entity altogether, and all the other facilities that do the repairs, all the body shops, the repair shops, they are their own entity. So the dealers have opened up a separate EIN number, whole separate business to work out of Leon. They're the ones that are doing the purchasing, the transport deals with the tow trucks to the facilities, they're doing the repairs and also the sales. And so everything will be brought back to Madison. I'm sorry, but the sales tax that would follow the buyer, so if they live in like in California or Florida, they would pay those sales tax wherever they register the vehicle.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this case? We have one? While we're waiting, just a comment here. This is not an unusual rezoning. I mean, this is well within one mile of the twenty-nine corridor, and there are other business areas.
Yeah, I mean, you can, I mean, put the zoning map up, you can see that there's some, you know, some other red portions around, so, yeah.
Good evening, board. My name is Peyton Johnson, my attorney in Culpeper, Virginia with Davies Barrel here on behalf of some interested parties. We do have concerns with spot zoning. This, you're taking a point seven five acre lot and turning it into B one from a, you know, more than three, almost four acre piece of property that the drain field for the two houses that are on the current property are actually, would be in the residual, so if the lots are separated, there is concerns about what to do with those lots if this business does go fall through and then remerging the lots, you have that. There's also a cemetery on the property. That is a concern that, that you would be zoning into a business lot, something that does contain a cemetery. Additionally, there, one of the considerations is while there may not be that many vehicles that are coming there, every time that you do have one of the tow trucks or a rollback that is delivering the vehicle, you have issues with that and also the, the sounds of the beeping for, when it goes into reverse to park the vehicle, so there are some opposition to this potential zoning due to the spot zoning nature of it and all the things that I had listed for the board's consideration.
Are you representing a neighbor?
Yes.
Can you tell us who? Or just how close?
Very close.
Very close, okay.
Yeah, I will say that one of the conditions is that, you know, obviously, he's going to retain ownership of both parcels, so one of the conditions does say that this parcel would have the ability to maintain, repair, replace. You know, of course, I mean, he's going to own both of them, so he would do that for himself, so just as a matter of information.
If you'd like to, yeah.
Thank you very much for the statements and the concerns. As far as the tow truck and the beeping, there will be no delivery of vehicles to the property. The tow trucks and the delivery of the vehicle, the beeping, that would be unexistent in regards to our business because they would be delivered to the repair shop. There's no repairs being done at this property. It's only for satellite and remote document sort of work that we're doing. And then as far as the cemetery, that is something that was, I, I just actually found out speaking with a neighbor on the left side, very pleasant. It was Kim and Mike. I don't know if I was allowed to state their name, but we spoke with them. I went and I introduced myself. I introduced myself this week to my neighbors who were at home. I knocked on the doors. And very welcoming, and so the ones on the left, who I was able to speak to, and the ones also directly right next to them, and the neighbors across the street in front, just letting them know what my intentions were of the purchase and use of the property. And upon speaking with my neighbor to the left, they actually informed me that there was a cemetery, and I did, I was not aware of it. I was clearing out the brush, and then we went and we took a look at it. And there's something I spoke about with my parents. I was like, well, we bought a home, well, my parents bought a home back in nineteen ninety-six in Burke, and over there at that time, no one knew there was the Burke Cemetery, the Burke Family Cemetery on that property, and we let the community know. And to do, like, do honor to the family, it was roped off and, and gated, a small little gate, everyone to go visit could go visit. That's the idea as well with this one, because when I saw it, there were headstones, and my neighbor informed me, apparently during that time, it depends on the age of the person who passed, how big the headstone was, so there were, fortunately, little ones and different sized ones. And so during that time, I spoke about that, we need to stop doing the mini excavation, like clearing the brush, we need to go in there and do by hand or weed whack, so that cemetery currently abandoned, we're actually going to clear out and give it proper respect as far as like, not roping it off, but fencing it off where.
Where exactly is, is it in the red area?
So it's right below the red. It's not in the red area. It's below the red. And I was not able to count how many headstones that there were.
It's up in that back corner is where it's at. And I've counted with the foliage cleared in the winter, up to about a dozen graves so far, but I don't know there may be more in there. They date back Civil War time. There's a fair number. I don't know, I'm not really superstitious, but I don't, have graves disturbed? But, yeah, that's back in that corner, so if you were to basically take the left side and slice off, I don't know how deep it is, because I haven't been on the property, it's been all overgrown, so, but that's where it is in that left corner, and I didn't know if that's where the proposed parking lot is going to be, because that would cut down your capacity, I'm sure.
And just one question, one additional question. How would the vehicles be getting there if they're not being towed from your repair facility to here? Are they being driven from Manassas here for every vehicle that for you and every dealer? You're speaking for all the other dealers?
Yes, I'd be in charge, being the landlord of the property, for the other dealers as well. They would not be getting towed, and that's something on the lease that we would write out. Because that would be a concern of disturbing our neighbors, and we definitely want to keep that in mind. There's something where I've mentioned before, and the board has asked, if they were to drive by, what would we see? We'd see a whole bunch of transport trucks coming in, coming out. I mentioned, no, it'd be pretty much what it is right now. How would it be if you were to drive by? We're looking to keep disturbances to the minimum, actually renovate and revive the property. The overgrowth, all that, clean it up.
Any other question for the applicant?
And I'm sorry, one, there would not be any overnight parking as well. So our. On the lots.
There's nothing on the lot?
Correct. In the fenced in area, we would keep that, no overnight parking. For the most part, it's just to be in compliance for.
Do you have no vehicles sitting there overnight?
In the fenced in area, maybe a couple, but no more than. Oh, yeah, sorry. So, I mean, we could put it to none, because the vehicles are being taken directly to the repair shop, and so we lose money if we take it to here and then take it to the repair shop.
How do you, how do you time the customer being there? So you know that the customer is going to be in Madison, and you just drive it from Manassas to Madison, meet them for ten minutes, and then the vehicle leaves?
Correct, that's what we've done since two thousand and fifteen from our dealership in Strasburg. We've done the repairs in Manassas, we coordinate with clients that come in from Pennsylvania, even Tennessee, and then we meet them there, and then we do the exchange, the paperwork, and then off they go with their vehicle or their.
As, as much as possible, would you please address the planning commission and not make this a question and answer session? Thank you. I have a question, a quick question, since you now realize there's a cemetery there. Does that, will that impinge on the area for your parking area?
I don't see it would, from what I could see, from what Mr. Mike has shown me. It's right underneath that red area. So, I mean, we'd keep it to no vehicles, of course, overnight there. I mean, except for we might have a tenant there on the. I mean, except for, we might have a tenant there on the first, like, if I were to stay over, then, like, no, no for sale vehicles overnight there, it'd just be our, our vehicle.
Okay, yes, Pete.
Pete, I got a comment. I think, and Dave, I think Mike remembers this, but if you look back in the ordinance, I don't think this is spot zoning, because we had a zoning that was villages of press, villages of Brightwood, and villages of Leon. And I think this building, this area followed on the, was village of Leon, the BB1.
Okay, any other question for the applicant or any other comment from the planning commission? Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have any other? Yes.
Hi, I'm Gary Fay, I'm the next door neighbor to Mike, and I'm a car dealer. What he's saying is not true. First of all, if he's only going to have, if you're in the car business, you don't make money if you have a couple cars. You only make money when you have a bunch of cars. And if he's got five people running off of one location, that makes it even worse, because the five people are not going to get along. There's going to be problems, and then we're not going to know which one of the five we have to go to. I just, I'm concerned that this is in such a rural area, he's come from Manassas to Madison and we have all these properties, commercial properties, and he's not even going to be living there, and there will be, there will be cars being brought in. That's, that's how you get them, the other thing is, if I'm not mistaken, are these salvage cars?
They are.
Okay, salvage cars, you take them to your shop, you fix them, okay? And then what happens, it goes out on the lot and it doesn't run. So we're going to then have to take it back to Manassas to have it fixed. I'm just, I, I mean, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work with the plan that comes in here to sit there and put five businesses in one building on a fenced-in lot. We were never told, any of the neighbors, that there was going to be a fenced-in lot. He never told us about that. I've been in this community now for 22 years, and, you know, I'm just saying, this is, this is not what it sounds like. I'm in the internet business as well, they still have to come to buy the car. It's, it's not something, and a salvage car is something that breaks all the time. That's why they're salvage cars. So I just.
Thank you, sir. Any other, yes, Pete?
I guess a question or a comment. The way I understand this, there's not going to be people coming to the car lot and looking at cars to buy the car lot, everything is an internet sale.
It doesn't, that's not real.
That is real, I do it myself.
I'm not, I'm in the car business.
I am too.
But I'm just saying that that's not how most of the business is done.
I'm just saying, from what he's telling us, and what I understand is, the people are not visiting the car lot to buy the cars.
Why? Then why have the five offices there?
Because five people are doing the same thing that he's doing.
Saying it can be done.
They're not competing against each other unless they're competing on the computer, they don't have an individual standing there and talking to that individual.
Thank you for your comment and concern, since 2015, we have been able to accomplish this, and where we have had our previous dealership, there's actually 22 dealers working out of that space. Mainly, I've only seen one or two of my other neighbors who rent an office. We obtained the office in order to be in compliance with the dealer board, to be able to have our license, we need to have a space allocated for 10 parking spaces, because in Virginia, there is no dealer designation for a wholesale license. And the salvage vehicles that we do repair, we make sure that we repair them as we would for an insurance company, we have a collision center that we repair vehicles for GEICO, USAA, or even other dealers or people who come off, they have a pocket. We make sure that our vehicles that are sold do not break down, we focus mainly on buying vehicles that are five years or newer and also included in our sale, we don't have our clients pay extra for an extended warranty. It's a three-month, 3,000-mile limited warranty, we're actually stepping that up to six months, 6,000 miles, because we're confident in the work that my team does in order to deliver a quality product that was repaired at our own facility. And since 2015, we have not had a complaint of our cars breaking down or leaving people stranded. Actually, one of very few dealers that are currently, by the grace of our Lord God, and also the reviews of our clients, five stars, so. It is a process, does not make us millions, by no means, we do not have that type of money to have that amount of cars on a car lot or floor planning where the interest rates are high, so that's a different business model. And, and I respect that, that business model, I just am not able to get, like toe-to-toe and compete in that, we have a niche market and so would our other tenants who are already doing this. And no vehicles would be coming in for people to look and browse there, because for the most part here, everybody knows how a RAV4 runs or a Chevy truck or an F-150, and if they want to go try out, like an F-150, they go test drive at a CarMax or another Ford dealership, and if they want to pay top price, we sell the vehicles at a depreciative price, or it's called diminished value, because it's been repaired, so you shouldn't take, pay top price, there's those options. For example, Battlefield Ford, they, they're great vehicles, new vehicles, I think, and so they have their own warranties and their own type of price, we sell rebuilt vehicles, show the clients how the vehicle was before it was repaired, and we make sure to repair them correctly, because our name and our team is behind that service and product we deliver. So it is true, what I'm saying, because we've been doing it, and I make sure to do what I say, because I'm representing my family as well, being up here, and I will make sure that my tenants are aware of that and do the same, and that will be on the lease.
Mr. Chairman, is it clear how Madison will receive tax revenue from this, it being an internet business, these, these deals happen and the money is only allocated to whatever county the transaction took place in. If the transaction takes place in Manassas, but they just come here to pick up a vehicle, there is no tax revenue for Madison County to obtain from this. So is there a clear indication to the county and to the board, exactly how Madison County will benefit and receive tax revenue from this, from allowing this to, to go on?
Yeah, I think that was the point that Mr. Elliott was making earlier about that.
But, so there has, but there has been a clear indication of how the, the money will transfer, I don't, I don't know that that's in the application, is all I'm asking.
Before this comes finally before the board supervisors, I'm sure we'll be looking at that, since it's already been brought up, yes.
Yeah, I can look into that, and I'll just say, you know, we don't have a business license in the county, so that kind of, you know, I guess there would be a sales tax that we would, at the point of the dealership, that's about all I can think about, but, you know, we were a county and most businesses like the fact that we don't have a business license tax, believe it or not, so.
Okay.
Interauto Center. It's inter, like international or interstate, Interauto Center. Yeah, and then Interauto Service is our repair facility.
Okay, any other question for the applicant? You may address, yes. Would you go back to the microphone so we can hear you, please?
I, so I don't understand the internet sales, when you're saying that it's done, and why we need, why we need to have the lot there?
Okay, you're, you're basically saying the same thing again, so thank, thank you, yes. Any other comment from the public or any other question for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I, could I?
Yes.
I think, Mr. Leon, it, you explained this to this group here and most of us a long time ago, why the need to have the fenced-in area, I think it would be, it would be informative of some of these folks, why do you need a fenced-in area, it's a, it's a box you got to check, so please.
Oh, yes, and so, because we do work in salvage, one of the requirements that the salvage department that works out of the D and B require is at least 600 square feet of fenced-in or enclosed area. So it could be a garage, it could be a privacy fence, it could be the type of fence that was shown here. That, that's why the boxed-in enclosed space. And so we are more than happy to put in a type of, and it does not necessarily have to be a privacy fence, we're just going with a visual barrier, because we thought maybe that would be more pleasing to the neighbors, but, or it could be the type of fence that currently is now. It's a rustic, old-style type of fence, we could put that in, and that counts as an enclosed space. That's why it's like a boxed-in area. But the vehicles that are going to be repaired are being taken directly to a repair facility, and even the vehicles that are being torn down, those are going to be at the repair facility, because that's where the manpower is, the inventory is going to be taken down and utilized to repair the other vehicles. So that's why the fenced-in area is to check off the box that is, to be in compliance with the law in Virginia for the salvage department.
Yeah, and following up on Mr. Yow's comment, that's also the reason for the 10 parking spaces and the size of each individual dealer's space, if I'm correct?
Yes, sir.
You've told us that ahead already, that those are all requirements that you have to meet for the state.
Yes, even if we do not use those spaces, those are required in order to obtain your independent used vehicle dealer license, I'm not sure about the franchise side, but the used vehicle dealer license, you need at least 10 spaces, even if you only have one or two cars. Even if you put one or two cars there, or no cars, like in our case, you still need an allocated amount of space for the parking.
All right. Thank you, any other comment or question?
I have one comment.
Yes.
My, really, my only concern at this point would be the cemetery, I think, as this moves forward towards the board. I think some concession needs to be made on.
I think I can walk, I'll walk out there and take a look at it, I've been meaning to go to it, I've been a little busy, so we'll go out there, I think there's some state code provisions on cemeteries when you find, I think you have to fence them in, so.
I would hope there's something.
Right, there is a specific code, you know, so we'll look at that and make sure we're in compliance with that for sure.
Yep.
Okay, any other comment or question? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. All right, as we changed our order slightly, we'll move to case number OA-10-22-26, amending the zoning ordinance specifically Article 20 definitions and adding a, a definition, I think you mean, for the term short-term lodging unit as Article 20-160A. This definition would allow a single or one short-term lodging unit as a byright use on a C1 conservation, an A1 agriculture, an R1 limited residential, and R2 general residential zone parcel. And two or more short-term lodging units would require a special use permit on a C1 or A1 zone parcel. On R1 and R2 zoned parcels, a second short-term rental unit would not be allowable. Okay, and again, we've been over this quite a few times, Ligon, anything to add?
Found a typo.
Yeah.
Darn, yeah, I think we've talked about this for a long time, so it will be codified for the next meeting, how it would look, you know, for a signed, codified amendment, other than that, I'll still say, I think this is a, a good amendment that wherever one I talk to, their calls Madison just says, you know, well, I like this policy, I think it's a, it's good to, short-term rental businesses, but also provides an avenue, if they do expand, they need to come in and come before the board so we can kind of check everything out, so.
Okay, any question for Ligon on this? We've been over this quite a few times, so this, this looks like it's probably about ready for the board supervisor. Okay, thank you, any, well, there's no applicant for this, any public comment on this? Okay, thank you. All right, case number OA-10-22-27, amending the zoning ordinance specifically, one, increasing the number of lots allowed to be served by a private drive from four up to eight. Two, require new subdivisions constructing a private road and/or the extension of a existing private road in an established subdivision shall file a road maintenance agreement to be publicly, publicly recorded in conjunction with the subdivision/survey plat. A maintenance agreement would also be required if an additional house or houses is constructed on an established lot that utilizes an existing private road where no subdivision is proposed, but no road maintenance agreement currently exists. And three, provide a set of standards for the construction of a new private road and/or the exist, extension of an existing private road. And again, this has been pretty thoroughly thrashed out, Ligon, any comment?
As you'll see, it says up to eight. So we are, and Sean looked into it, and I've always felt that if we go down to six, that would, that's indeed what the board wants to do, we, we will have it substantially changed, we've actually reduced it some, so. I just think, you know, it's been a while, this is a big change, but I think a reasonable change if we go to six or eight. And appreciate everyone's hard work on it, and, you know, look forward to the, to the hearing, and I think importantly, for administering this ordinance, I think it's something that we can administer, and it will, as Pete and other folks have sort of pointed out, I think it will help create some potential more building lots, but yet not a radical change with anyone in the area or, you know, we have done in the past. So I think it's overall, I appreciate everyone's hard work and bringing this to where it is.
Okay, thank you, any comment from anyone on the planning commission? Yes, Francois. Yes, that's very specifically in it, yes. Any other question or comment? Fay did ask me to reiterate her reasons for going with eight, primarily that there, well, two reasons, one, she says there's already a lot of these around that are exceeding four, and she thinks this is a way of letting farmers be able to stay on their land and still provide them some sources of income from my, small subdivisions. Okay, any other comment on this one?
I got one.
Yes, Mike.
So, when you do a private, when we do a subdivision like this, and you've got two houses that's at the end of the road, for instance, I was on a road today, private road, now I counted six houses. Two of those were on the main road front, are they counted or not counted? Now, they're, they had road fronters, but their, but your driveways were on the private road.
We have generally counted those, if it's, if, even though maybe they don't use it, they have access to it, so as a general rule, if you have a private right-of-way that goes between two lots and then goes back to two lots, that, that would be four. So that's sort of how we've looked at it, and again, it's, you know, with this, the subdivisions always, it's like a jigsaw puzzle out there, we don't always know why or how it got to its way, you've got, the way it was, sometimes you have grandfathered in the past, family subdivisions have been exempt from the four and one. I don't think the code necessarily says that, we're going to be very clear that it's not exempt. The big advantage of family subdivisions, you don't have to wait that 10-year period, so you still have advantages of a family subdivision, but, you know, we just try to look at every one, count, and if, you know, and other than the single subdivisions, it'll always come up for the planning commission and the board, and we'll just look at it and try to put some common sense to it, and I think it will work out okay.
If, if there were, for instance, if there was six on this one right now, and somebody wanted to divide, they would not be allowed to.
Yeah, right now it's four.
Unless you said, if there's an existing six now, and we would allow two, because there's already six.
It depends on the number that the board of supervisors ultimately decides on. Right now, we have a hard number of four, now, it's absolutely true, there are some lots pre-1967 where roads were built and all the rest of it, we can't fix that, what we can do moving forward is implement this in a way that kind of balances the competing interests as expressed by this planning commission and also the board of supervisors.
And, and that comes back down to, to build permits, somebody comes in to pull a permit and build a house, or?
It's going to make it difficult for real estate agents, it seems to me, to make sure that people understand what they do. But if somebody is looking to build and it exceeds six, and, and this, this will happen. You know, there are some properties that have seven or eight houses on it, those lots would not be affected by that, well, actually, they couldn't really create new lots. And the reason they couldn't. And the reason they couldn't is because they are already maxed at their six or eight, depending on, you know, what the Board of Supervisors ultimately does. So in other words, this does not solve everybody's problem. It solves the problem for people who live on roads with four or fewer houses. Because then they can add one or two or three or four, depending on what the board does.
Well, then we, we, we have the maintenance agreement requirement that would have to come in, so. Nothing more fun than reading the subdivision ordinance all day, I can tell you that much. That's supposed to be funny.
Okay, any, any other question or comment?
I got a question.
Yes.
John, John, if there, if there's six already there, and six is the number that we go with, whatever. And somebody has a lot that's there, and it was already created a lot with the six there. Under what they call hardship, could somebody build on that lot?
I don't know that that would be hardship, I mean, you could certainly argue that to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I think the issue is, you know, they kind of know that going in. Now, the harder question, remember the way non-conforming use works. You know, people have to have taken actions relying on the existing ordinances. Now, if they had a valid building permit, you know, they could have done it, but if they did not have that, then, you know, they're kind of between a rock and a hard place.
Okay, any other question or comment? Alright, that lets us move on to the highlight of the evening. Case number RZ-10-22-25. Creatorsville Elementary School. We've been having, well, alright, is there any other public comment on that one?
We, we, we would be able to do one real quick, and this is really more informational, and it's a Good Hope Church, I don't want to, to keep moving around, but we just have the application, I just want to kind of put the good, and I know Ms. Garth is here, and she can, and she can leave, so. If it's okay, Chairman, if I could just do a real quick overview of that, because it's really outside of the ad, that's really, I just want to give everybody a little bit of an update, what to expect.
Yeah, I mean, it's, if the, if the proposed applicants here, this is just a discussion, it's not actually one of our cases.
This is going to be November.
Yeah.
And as you see from the ad, Good Hope Church, behind the actual church, they're on Good Hope Baptist Church Road. It's on Beautiful Run Road, they have a 3.9 acre lot. I might remember five or six years ago, they had a special use permit to run a, a small school out of their, actually, actual church facility. They're looking at building a 12,000 square foot freestanding school that's allowable by special use in A1. In the VDOT, Ms. Garth has been teaching all day and being a project manager at night. And she has engineering plans, talked to VDOT, there, we've conversations with, conversations with the VDH, because they already had a perk for a large, I think at one time you were planning on doing something large there. They have something on file, so no more than 200 students, that would be a condition. VDOT, seems like they'll be fine with just a commercial entrance, no turn lanes, there's good site distance on a beautiful run. Again, 200, 200 kids, you're probably looking at 60, 70 trips at a peak hour. So I just wanted to put that on everyone's map, that that will be coming up with more concrete, other than just the application at this point on, in the October 2019 meeting. So just, any questions you might have right now, we'd be happy to answer, but is that, Ms. Garth, has that covered pretty much everything? Okay.
When, when this was first brought up, there was some question about possibility, the possibility that there was a pre-existing special use permit that had already been approved from years ago.
Yeah, we, we have, well, we do have that, but to me, that was, that was for a much smaller, you know, and that was sort of facility inside the church. This is sort of a totally different parcel, larger. So, I mean, I think the best approach here is just to move forward with a new special use permit. And, you know, we'll have every, she's, especially the architectural plans, I think any day now, if you don't already have them. You know, that will help us a lot, look at the site plan and kind of see what we'll lay out. But the big, you know, the big thing within, with these things, traffic and, I mean, that's really the two, two large ones. I think we're in good shape on.
Does this piece of land touch the piece of land that they already had the special?
Yes, it's, it's adjoining.
The land already has the special use permit?
That was my question, is, they have an existing special use permit currently for, what is it, two to five-year-olds? And yes, ma'am, come on. And are we amending, it is two to five-year-olds. Are we amending the current, the current operational special use permit, or are we granting, are we proposing a new special use permit for this new structure?
I think the best thing you do is, is a new special use permit, I mean, the, that daycare facility will go into this as well. Would everything be sort of in one facility, Ms. Garth?
That is the plan long-term, I think we would have to have a gradual process of moving the preschool and kindergarten program into the new building. I don't have a definite date for you on that, because that would be years down the road. And it depends on how quickly we move with the new building construction. But currently, we operate with two, two-year-olds through six-year-olds.
Mr. Jackson?
As a point of clarification, if this is all going on a different tax map parcel, then we do it as a special use permit, now. Evidently, would be to, my white push as I had last days, would be to vacate property, well, of course, the landowner does not have to do that. And it may make sense that this will be kind of cumbersome, it'll be two processes. If we are expanding the use of the existing tax map parcel, we would need to modify that special use permit, and for this new parcel, we would need a brand-new special use permit.
So it's not the same parcel?
That's my understanding.
Sure, Jones, what, three parcels?
There's three parcels, two on one side of the road, and a 1.2 acre parcel directly across from the church, but there is a road that divides.
Got another one?
Yeah, no, I think move forward with just a new special use permit on that new parcel. I think you want to keep the integrity of all those lots, that was sort of what you, it, it told me, that that would be the preferred. So it's a, you know, it's a new facility, and we'll, we'll have all the details in a month. So I think we're in good shape.
Okay, does anyone have a question for the applicant? Yes, Francois?
It would just be one program. We currently have the preschool, so we would just be expanding grades, and then it would all be under one name. So the 200 would be applicable to that, or 200 in the new building.
Any other question? Okay, thank you. Alright, moving on to case number RZ-10-22-25. Creatorsville Elementary School LLC has applied to rezone 5.83 acres from A1 agriculture to M1C limited industrial with conditions as allowed by right per Articles 9-1-20 and 9-1-36. In the M1 zoning district, the applicant is seeking to utilize the parcel's existing buildings, the former Creatorsville School, and the former voting precinct building for a mixture of short-term lodging units, a restaurant slash bar, event venue space, and retail space. In addition, the applicant is seeking to construct new short-term lodging units or cabins on the property. The total number of new short-term lodging units would not exceed 11 total units. And these lodging units would be a mixture of one and two-bedroom units, with one unit potentially containing up to eight bedrooms. The former Creatorsville School structure has roughly 15,000 square feet of interior area and is proposed to contain up to 20 short-term lodging units. And the former voting precinct building has roughly 2,300 square feet of interior area and is proposed to be utilized for retail space. If we zone to M1 prior to the sale of the 5.83 acre parcel to Creatorsville Elementary School LLC, Madison County's Board of Supervisors would administratively subdivide a roughly 0.81 acre portion of the subject parcel as a standalone parcel under county ownership for continued use as the location of the Creatorsville Mountain Museum. The parcel's postal address is 1120 Old Blue Ridge Turnpike, Madison, Virginia, and is identified on Madison County's tax map as 21-61. Ligon, I know there's some changes from what we just read here already.
Yes, so the, the first thing is, we did have a revised site plan, conceptual site plan, and I did leave it out. And I know on Monday, Mr. Shapiro had stated this, but the, the first thing is, you know, we're moving down. We have advertised for 11 short-term rental cabins. This is now, has moved down to seven, and he's limiting it to 400 square feet per cabin. So that's the first thing. And the, the draft proffers that are in the packet that have been online will be revised to reflect this, those will be signed and online by next Friday, I think that's September 30th. So just, if you're watching from home, please just check the website, and that will be on the website with a signed proffer. I just took a few notes, just to sort of, real quick, you know, on this proposal. The school's been vacant since 2000, as I understand. Whereas obviously for many decades, it was sort of the hub of the Creatorsville Village. Once vacated, the school was remained under county ownership. So since 2000, the county has offered the building for sale at various times with, with, with no success, unfortunately. Since my arrival in the county about three and a half years ago, the school building has been offered for sale. The board has also seriously considered demolishing the building, and I do remember that a bid to demolish the building for about, I think it was $20,000, $250,000 was entertained. And sort of during that same time, a little over two years ago, several developers approached the county regarding potentially purchases in the building, usually looking to develop for a mixture of retail lodging and mostly, you know, long-term rentals. Before Mr. Shapiro's proposal came a few months ago, the, the most serious inquiry, inquiry happened about three years ago, where an individual approached the county to potentially develop the former school as a mixture of long-term apartments and retail space, in other words, for a mixture of uses. And it was, it was determined then that amending the county code, so to, to allow for what we call a standalone mixed-use ordinance, which has kind of been the buzzword in zoning for a while now, would be appropriate. The intent of this ordinance was allow for the former school to be revitalized and hopefully become a new anchor for new revitalized Creatorsville. To me, offering a potential avenue to revitalize the building seemed like a more desirable alternative, at least for me sitting here, than paying to have it demolished. So at that time, I was charged in the planning commission, again, a little over three years ago, with evaluating several potential zoning amendments, and we contemplating added, adding the term mixed-use buildings. Specifically, as the potential is an SUP, is a special use permit in agriculture, we looked at B1. And I will sort of point out, when you look at the different uses in A1 and B1, some of the by right uses that could be used for A1, or, you know, you have everything from your sort of typical agriculture activities to agriculture production, livestock market, commercial slaughterhouse, or by right. B1 has generally the same type of uses with mostly, you know, a, a more of a bias toward retail-type and service-type businesses. So we looked at all this, and we decided that the M1, we would add a standalone mixed-use building as a, as a, a by right use. And it would kind of be similar to what's in business, it's similar, if you look at the M1 district, is, it's kind of what I would, it's called limited industrial. It has things like banks, restaurants, offices, warehouses, and it does have some processing, and it does allow for some, some industry as well. So, having said that, we, we did add that several years ago with the, sort of the, the thought that this one particular individual would come and offer proffers for a very delimited type of rezoning that would rely on mixed-use buildings and maybe one or two of the retail or other uses that are in, in M1. So that's sort of how we, we got here, because I've been pretty, you know, adamant that this particular proposal is what it is. It's a limited industrial, we call it industrial, but in reality, the uses of retail, short-term lodging, and I guess in this case, a restaurant, is what's being proposed. So I've sort of, you know, from my perspective, and I will be putting a really detailed report together by next Friday, is, you know, revitalizing this, considering it was a, a, a former school, we're looking at an event venue with lodging. You know, it's sort of like a school, you're going to have peak business hours, nights toward weekends, whereas a school kind of has those peak hours, mornings and afternoons during the week. So I think one of our, you know, traffic and environmental concerns are well-taken, and I think that those should be discussed. And, you know, I was looking at today, looking at traffic, looking at some of the traffic counts from VDOT provides on the 3.6, 3.6 miles from Weekly Hollow to North Blue Ridge Turnpike, for instance, there are 790 trips a day. So if you sit there somewhere in between there and counted every car went, you know, north or east and west, you could account 790 trips as the average annual. Now, VDOT actually gives some pretty interesting data that they also in, on, south, on Old Blue Ridge Turnpike, they give you what they call a peak hour traffic. So out of those 790 trips a day on South Blue Ridge Turnpike, what's the highest hour? What's the rush hour? On, if, you know, Old Blue Ridge Turnpike has a rush hour, it's actually 81 trips. So the one highest hour on, on the Old Blue Ridge Turnpike's 81. I don't know if that's a lot or not, it doesn't sound necessarily like a lot, but when you've got 790 trips a day, little over 10% of the trips are in one particular hour. And just to compare, Graves Mill Road is probably the most similar road to Old Blue Ridge Turnpike. You have about 830 trips there a day, if you just count it, you know, either direction. And that rush hour, that peak hour on that one, 77. So if you look at a, an event venue, you have a wedding, I did talk to Mr. Shapiro beforehand. You know, what would be a, a large event there? And, you know, I think we both agree that, to me, about 250 folks would be a pretty big event. And I don't really think that that is going to be the norm. But if you look at a 250 folks attending a wedding, say on a Saturday night, the standard that I found online for wedding venues that they recommend, it was one of these wedding planning sites, they recommend that to plan for one car for 2.5 people, that's a pretty good number. I think it's a pretty conservative number, I don't, I think you probably would have more people carpool. So you can just kind of do the math, a 250-person event, you'd have 100 cars. You probably figure, you know, 30% might, might stay on site. You're probably going to get a peak to and from 60, 70 cars during a really large event. And I always say, traffic engineering and science is by no means a perfect science, a little bit of a, you know, it's a little bit of a voodoo sort of science, I say, but still, I still think your largest event, you're looking at 60, 70 trips in and out at a very sort of large event. You know, compare that to what historically was used for a school where you have buses, you, you know, you have parents. You could maybe argue that to a certain degree, an event venue could maybe be a little less of an impact. But I, I don't really particularly know what the enrollment of that school was, so. As a county planner, just to be clear, I, I understand, you know, we, as a commission and as a board, have been through large public hearings, and there's a lot of things to consider, and I think as a real estate owner, it, it makes sense that, that we want to see the, the property revitalized as, as opposed potentially tearing it down, but we're very careful to make sure that we hear the citizens' concerns and any, any particularized harm that might come to, especially those in the, in the general vicinity, we want to make sure that we mitigate it. And we do have other processes, if you look at the conditions, you know, we have a site plan, we're, you know, very much have a, you know, landscaping and buffering is something that will be, even have sort of a part B to this, when a site plan comes in to look at that. But, you know, this is really potentially, I don't have a vote, but it's a relationship with the developer. These things don't happen overnight, Cresser rape, you know, was two years ago, and, you know, we're still waiting on a site plan. years ago, and, you know, we're still waiting on a site plan. You know, if this were to be approved, we definitely wish success and hope it is a productive property that operates within a set of parameters that are clear, that everyone understands. So having said that, I'll just, that's my spiel, and I've talked to a lot of you on the phone, and I enjoy talking to people who love it, who hate it, who, you name it. I'm here as a resource, and welcome to, happy to talk to anyone at any time. So that's my spiel. Any questions for me? Any questions for Ligon?
I'm reading the soil report, and it appears to be the way I read this, this facility being used three days a week.
Yeah, I have read it, but, you know, my sort of, my sort of standard on the, and I don't particularly be an expert on the soils, but, you know, this is, the uses that are proposed, if it is approved with seven cabins with the particular uses, VDH is going to have to sign off on what they put in the ground, if it's engineered. So I don't know if Mr. Shapiro could have a better answer for that, but I'll...
Yes, just please identify yourself again, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Certainly. Wonderful to be here with you this evening, Felix Shapiro. For those of you who didn't catch Monday night's performance, it is on YouTube, and I highly recommend it. I'll be at the Funny Bone Thursday and Friday, but other than that, I'm here tonight. So I certainly want to allay any concerns. I will not be boring you once again with the two-hour presentation. That being said, I do want to answer Mr. Elliot's question. I think the soil report, and the expert is in the house, does talk about equalization over, from surge events across a broader portion of the week. The numbers that were included in that report were a working estimate at that point of how many cabins we've had. Since then, we've heard a great deal of feedback from our neighbors, actually much of it positive. I just wanted to toss out, I've been overwhelmed by the outpouring of support since Monday's meeting. It's been pretty touching to hear everybody's stories about the school and how much this project means to them. But that being said, there is, as with all things, a diversity of opinion. Wanting to be respectful to my neighbors, we took a reduced site plan, if you will, going down to seven cabins, as opposed to the 11 we originally discussed, and limiting them to one-bedroom, 400-square-foot cabins. So in so doing, that does sort of decrease the amount of heads and beds overnight and decrease that septic requirement. So that, I could certainly understand why that three-day number left off the page at you. I think it's important to understand within the context of a broader estimate process. But I think better than me, the soil scientist himself, Danny Hatch.
Yeah. Real quickly, before he goes up, if I'm reading this correctly, this was the estimates that you were using were based on the earlier proposal, and you have since reduced the number of beds, or whatever you want to call it, considerably?
Yes, sir, by 75%.
Yes, would you identify yourself?
Absolutely. My name is Danny Hatch. I'm president of Dominion Soil Science. I live in Falkir County. It's the southern part of Falkir County in downtown Goldvein, if anybody's familiar with that area right there. Been practicing soil science for a long time. You know, this gentleman right here, Mr. Jackson, we've been cohorts in a few projects in the past. But my company was hired by Mr. Shapiro to come out and basically look at the soils. We understood that, you know, it was a difficult site, floodplain, type soils that we're dealing with. There was a report written by Mr. Dwayne Dixon back in 2002, that evidently somebody wanted to come and, you know, do something with the building, use existing, you know, drain field that was there that's under the parking lot. So let me, let me be perfectly clear that what our task was, is to come out and find the best soils that would serve some type of capacity, would be able to work with some type of system with the technology we have today to work with, which we didn't have many years ago, and meet the Health Department regulations. So we looked the whole site over, and there were two, or area in the back, and the area on the, kind of the middle right, and I believe that's in the report, that I think y'all have seen that, or it got put into a report. So these two areas that we looked at are, in our opinion, the best soil that's out there. And depending, you know, they are what they are as far as size is concerned. They are what they are as far as depth of water table, to the features that we saw in those soils. We did, our company does use a mini excavator to evaluate the soils. So we did go out there and dig back-up pits, once we recognized this landscape on the property, and took detailed descriptions of the soil that was there. So from that information, you can start coming up with, you know, everybody wants to know how the soil per, okay? Well, you know, we don't dig a whole pour of water in it. You look at the soil, and it will tell you what it's going to do year-round. Is this have a high water table during the wintertime? Is it permeable in that part? So these are the things that you look at, and we calculate, and that's what we've done here. And again, this is the very preliminary stages of this project. So we have identified two areas that we feel will serve this project. Now, I have worked with a lot of projects around Stafford's, Pennsylvania, Culpeper, Madison, that's kind of the area that we work in, that, or, you know, B&amp;Bs. There's one in Pennsylvania, very similar to what Mr. Shapiro is trying to do here, with the mini cabins and the bedding events and things like this. And all of those types of facilities, you know, they're, you know, they're not full seven days a week. They're sporadic. They're going to be on the weekends, you know, you'll have your most people. And then during the week, you'll have, you know, a lesser amount. And then even in wintertime, it'll probably be shut down for a few weeks or a month or whatever. So as we look at these types of facilities, we look at, you know, what's going to be our gallons that we're dealing with, and then how can we spread that out over a seven-day period? We do a lot of churches. You know, you think of a church, and oh my goodness, you got this big crowd comes on Sunday morning, all these people. But actually, when you spread that out over seven days, it's really not that many gallons per day. So this is what we're looking at as we look at what's being proposed, the different uses, and how can we take this treated water? Let me be, again, perfectly clear. This will not be your grandmother's drain field. This will be highly treated. What type of, you know, system that will be used, that's yet to be determined, but there are many on the market that will clean this septic tank of fluid water up to where, it's very clean. It certainly could be discharged if need be, but we're looking to put it on-site. So it will, and again, along with that, you talked about the maintenance on the roads a while ago, this systems will certainly have maintenance by a licensed service provider. So it'll be looked at and cared for during the year. So it'll definitely be an alternative system, engineered system, meeting the Health Department regulations. The equalization is what we're kind of, you know, playing with now. And again, we're in the very early stages, and that's the only reason we use that three-day, because of all the projects that we've worked on. I was just jumping off the slide.
I have a question.
Yes.
When you took the excavator out, did you go down, did you hit the water table?
We, absolutely, yes, sir. We... Well, the soil indicated we had seasonal water tables as shallow as six to 12 inches during the wet times of the year. Now, with that type of soil, what we'd be doing is some type of, almost an at-ground type surface.
So when you dug those holes, and you went down, as you went down, did you follow sand and gravel all the way down, or did you get a solid soil after you went through so much of the sand and gravel?
Well, let me look at my, is there a dirty? Our dirty fuel nuts we have right here? I mean, I'm looking at, we hit a very, at the top 20, 30 inches, all of it was basically, and I wouldn't say sand, but a lot of it was sandier than others, but you definitely had the gravel in there, being a floodplain soil. But normally, we would hit a strata down about three feet deep that was what we would call glade, or it's wet. In fact, these pits had water in them the day we were out there, which was in August. So we never really, I mean, I don't know, if you ask it, we hit something solid. We really didn't hit anything solid.
No solid type of materials, it's laid or...
It's...
Pretty much sand and gravel all the way.
Pretty much, yes, sir. It did. It's more of a, it's more of a landscape elevation thing that we're dealing with.
If you're, if the design here happens to be a conventional system, ultimately, after the conventional system is designed and whatever, it will go into a drain field to drain out the disposal of water into the soil?
This system will not be a conventional drain field. It'll be an alternative, yes, sir.
So the alternative system, that's what we use, once it's treated, then the alternative system eventually will go into the drain field and into the soil?
It will go into a dispersal area.
Which is the soil?
Which would be the soil, yes, yes. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, Mike.
So apparently, you're going to be using the primary and the reserve field then?
Oh, yes. I mean, I don't know, I don't think the Health Department is going to let us get about not having a reserve.
So I'm looking at, apparently, your primary is in an open space according to site plan, just being proposed at this moment. But do you reserve, it looks like it's right beneath all the lodges? Those are one-bedroom lodges?
Yep, you can see the reserve, and this is not perfectly to scale, but the sort of V-shaped space at the rear portion of the parcel. And I think a more-to-scale rendering of these fields is in the main deck for the evening, the materials that were submitted on Friday. Sorry. This might make things make a little more sense. I keep going down?
That's what I'm looking at.
Yes.
So, so your lodges, if I compared the two pictures, it looks like to me that they're on top of each other.
The lodges?
If you scroll to the next screen back up, other way, and I compare the two pictures, it looks like to me that you're seven great lodges there.
This is the old version, that predates...
I have seen one newer, this isn't it. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so actually, it shows the reserve site there. And the primary site is in what's shown as a green space there?
The open space?
Yeah, I think.
You guys, you looking at me?
I'm asking you, is the primary over here where the open space is?
Yes, sir.
So the one in the upper portion of the picture is your reserve, then, the kind of almost V-shaped, okay? And so the primary is in that green area behind the school building and the patio?
That's correct.
Okay.
We consider that just a little bit, the better soil of the two.
And I guess that apparently, there's no space allowed, I mean, that you have to have requirement between the field and the lodging?
Oh, well, the dispersal area, the part of the Health Department, from a building, if it's a basement, you have to be 20 feet away. If it doesn't have a basement, you'll only have to be 10 feet away. And the property line is five feet.
So wherever this field's going to be, your lodging will be 10 feet away from it?
Yes, sir. You can, and again, it's not perfectly to scale, but you can see, this sort of V creates an opportunity right there to put sort of back units. So we've been intentional in spacing the cabins to conform. Though naturally, you know, the rendering you have before you was made, before I had access to the updated survey with the, to scale input. So I had to drop it in by hand, but it conforms to the conceptual layout.
So this is a non-conventional system. Will it be a leach system, or will it be buried in the ground with your water table only being 30 inches down? Will this be buried above your water table, where it will drain out, or will it be a leach system where it drains out on top of the surface?
It will be a dispersal area, and again, we're in the preliminary stages, whether that we're going to do a drip system above it, you know, we could bring in sand and elevate the system. But the whole, the whole, the whole idea with any type of drain field, we're going, again, we're going to clean it up, very clean. It'll look like your water bottle right there. Okay, good, good. So, and what we want to do is, the regulations, depending on, you know, how much we, well, depending on how high we want to bring it, you can have as little as six inches before it goes into a seasonal water table. So what we want to do is clean it up, and then put it back into Mother Nature, put it back into the aquifer.
That's why it's concerned, is going into the water.
It's going into the aquifer, just like every drain field does.
But if I understand what you're saying correctly, what's, you're removing pathogens, let's say, before it goes into the leach field?
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir.
So what's, basically what's going into the leach field is just water?
Or plain water, yes, sir. I mean, it'll have a UV, it'll kill the viruses. It'll definitely clean it up. I mean, like I said, this could be discharged into the string, you know, if you wanted to. But we found an area on-site, and the only way you'd even go discharge, if that's, you know, a failing system, and that's your only choice. But here, we have a site to work with.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think a lot of the concerns that we've heard are people thinking in terms of traditional septic drain fields and stuff like that. And what you're proposing is an engineered system, which does not put anything except the water back into the water table.
That is correct. Every drain field recharges aquifer.
So it'll be clean?
And we're going to make it clean before it recharges.
It'll be cleaner than the pasture land upstream from it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? Yeah, nice.
I'm sure there would be some sort of, hopefully, safeguard for flooding. I don't know how the elevation is above the average annual kind of river height versus the, you know, to where that proposed primary drain field is. And I wasn't sure if anybody remembered, Pete, I'm looking at you, in 95, you know, how that water came around the school, I'm assuming. I mean, I remember, I was young, but, I mean, Graves Mill and that was pretty wild. Never been in the school?
Not that I know of.
Not that I've ever found anybody that has told you it had.
That's...
My wife taught me there for a right good while, and a couple of floods while she was there that never came into school.
Like on the school floor, but it came around the school?
Right next to it.
Yeah, never got it. That's fantastic. Yeah, never got it. That's fantastic.
The only thing, that's certainly something that would be addressed in the design. I mean, and that's down the road a little ways. The day we were out there, actually, the Health Department came by and, you know, saw what we were doing, and saw our backhoe, and our excavator, and the holes we dug. So, they're very aware of where this, you know, these sites are out there.
So, none of the old drain field that's in the school would even be coming in?
No, sir.
And none of the old drain field that goes to the historical building would come in use?
Is that on its own system, the historical building?
So, I have seen schematics for a proposed drain field off the historical building. I am not aware of a historic one, but if there is, it would not be part of this plan. Our hope is to extend water service to the Historical Society as sort of an added benefit of this project. But it would be integrated into our leach field.
Well, I know they have a system that takes care of it now. But once upon a time, there was an old drain field there that went to that house. Because when I was on the board, we sent P B cameras to it.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Shapiro or for our expert over here?
I've got one for Mr. Shapiro.
Okay. Yeah.
So, at the meeting Monday night, someone brought up what I thought was a really good point, was about the cemetery, I'm sorry, about the church next door. And if they were to happen to have a funeral service at some particular point while you're having an event in you, how's that going to happen? I mean, you've got parties going on in one place and a funeral going on next door. How can?
Yes, sir. So, we have a few proffers that are intended to deal with that. One of which is, we are committing to maintaining a public events calendar on the Internet. As you all know, a wedding is an event that takes a phenomenal amount of planning. Certainly, this is not purely a wedding venue, but we imagine that all the events there will occur with some amount of lead time. Tragically, with funerals, that is not always the case. So, we think that one of the best things we can do is be totally open and transparent about when events will be on the property, allowing sort of mutualistic booking to occur. That being said, we also have taken considerable steps with the revised landscaping plan to include vegetative elements that we think will break up sound and reduce sort of the impact of events on neighbors whenever they occur. So, that is another key portion. We also have committed to having a designated onsite representative, so that if there are ever any sort of use conflicts with the neighbors, they have a person to call that's always there, always available, and is there to make sure our guests are being respectful of our neighbors and their needs. Certainly, the last thing we want to do is, you know, cast a pale over someone's last moments with their kin. So, we're going to do everything we can to maintain a respectful neighborly presence.
Following up with that a little bit, in your business plan, are your events primarily going to be inside, or are they probably primarily going to be outside, exterior?
So, we certainly think the interior event spaces is amongst the greatest selling points of the Craigsville School as a venue. I mean, almost no venues have the ability to offer immediate rain coverage. That being said, the environs are phenomenally beautiful, and we do anticipate, you know, some of our clients will elect to have outdoor venues in the patio area or even the open field to the back. So, I certainly can't commit that all events will be indoors, but we'll certainly make an effort to have as many as possible indoors. And I think many people, you know, dependent on season, will choose that as the obvious venue to avoid weather-related concerns.
Yeah, obviously, you're not planning on doing it in the parking lot then?
Oh, certainly not.
So, that, in the event that you did have an outdoor event, it would be basically behind the school building, well away from the church land there?
Yes, sir.
When you say events, are we talking about bands, DJs, or just events with?
Well, you know, I certainly don't want to be too prescriptive of what folks have at their wedding. But we don't picture this as being, you know, a festival grounds, if that's the question. You know, certainly, some people elect to have a band or DJ at their wedding. We put a proffer in saying that outdoor amplification will stop after a certain point. So, I believe it's nine PM during the week and eleven PM on weekends. You know, within those bounds, you know, people would be able to have music. But I think a concern has emerged, and I've heard it in some of my conversations, that we're going to be putting on, you know, the next lock-in festival, which is far from the truth. You know, whatever the benefits of those festivals, I think the clientele we hope to, they're probably not the most lucrative clientele to serve. We want to hit a bit of a higher price point, and to Liggins' point about the size of events. I mean, we're going to be a fairly expensive, I don't want to, we're going to be a fairly expensive wedding venue. So, I mean, if somebody wants to get into a really high number, they're really going to be breaking the bank in order to do so. I think it's much more likely that the vast majority of weddings, as the vast majority of weddings we've all been to, will fall probably somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty people. I don't think they'll be overwhelmingly disruptive to the neighborhood.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from Planning Commission? Okay, thank you, Mr. Shapiro. And if we could, for a public comment, we would like to obviously try to, as a courtesy, limit time to maybe three minutes per speaker. So, with that, I would open the floor to any public comment on this. Okay, and if you would, please come and identify yourself.
My name is Renee Balfour, and I'm one of the owners of Possum Store. And I have great concerns about this project on many, many levels. And I was unable to be there at Monday's meeting because I was out of town. But I spoke at length with Mr. Shapiro on Saturday. And I was surprised when I listened to the Monday meeting, and Mr. Shapiro said that I requested a path to, I guess, the bridge, which is not true. I did not request a path, and I, in fact, made it very clear to Mr. Shapiro that we do not support this project for a number of reasons. I'm assuming that everyone here is familiar with our neighborhood. And what we're talking about is an additional hundred and fifty people in a community that isn't even a hundred and fifty people large. We're talking about extensive noise pollution, light pollution. There's questionable, many, many questions regarding the actual renovation of the property. Has there been a business plan, a viable business plan presented that also outlines the budget? This is a huge plan in a very small community. And it's my understanding that he will have four years to complete the construction of the school and has four years to get an occupancy permit. So, my question to the board is, what kind of, what kind of noise is going to go on in our community while this construction is going on? And I feel that there's too many unanswered questions. And a lot of the questions that I hear the answers to have a very interesting spin on them. The nine o'clock noise ordinance and the eleven o'clock noise ordinance for a community of our size and the way our community functions is unthinkable. It's unthinkable to our community, it's unthinkable to the people who live next door to this space. And so, I'm going to be extending an invitation to the Planning Board and the Board of Supervisors to come to the store one evening and walk the area and see and really consider what kind of impact this is going to have on this very small and very tranquil community. I hear Mr. Shapiro repeatedly saying that he has a lot of support in the area. I've talked to many of my neighbors, and he does not have a lot of support from the neighbors that are closest. And I'm really surprised, Mr. Shapiro, that you keep saying that. We have a petition with over several hundred signatures on it, and the petition has just gone out. So, I think the project that's being proposed is going to be harmful for the community. I don't think a proper budget has been presented, unless I'm wrong, that supports giving Mr. Shapiro carte blanche effectively in a very small agricultural community to build what looks like is going to be over a five million dollar renovation. And how do we know he has the ability to do this? What has been presented to the Planning Commission and to the board? I'm also concerned because Mr. Shapiro, without notifying any of his neighbors, is applying for historic district designation. And I repeatedly hear that Mr. Shapiro cares about his neighbors, yet you have not talked to any of your neighbors before doing that. And so, my question is, why are you doing historic designation for the entire area as opposed to just for the school? And do you have a map of that?
You're addressing the Planning Commission, please, and not questioning Mr. Shapiro. And your three minutes are well loved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Benny Hurt. I've lived from the Possum Store up to Gray's Mountain, land up above. Been up pretty good, well, about eighty-three years. And some of y'all, I don't think, Mr. Pope back there is older than I am. He's saying, if you've seen what I've seen through, though, if he puts cabins in there, whether it be, that water comes back again. And y'all talking about not in the school. I've seen it over your head right beside that school.
I didn't say, I haven't seen it like that. I said I didn't see it in the school. I don't know if it was there or not. I didn't.
It washed our house way above. And we went up to, I call it the Black Church on the hill. We had to go and stay a few days in the early forties. And then at eighty-five, my daughter, the washed my truck away from the Possum Store, sitting in the hard road. And I caught fish behind that building, we used to go by putting a drain field. After the flood, I've caught traps out of it. Y'all believe if you want to, I don't lie, I tell the truth. And I don't think it's suitable for that. I ain't against nobody, I love everybody. But there's no place to put all them cabins from that boy's house at Leo's and ruin his property. And I thank y'all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is, excuse me. My name is Marty McGettrick, and I live on Full House Road in Craigsville. And this application for rezoning impacts different land elements in different ways. But I'd like to explain a little bit to you how it impacts me. My house is located exactly behind the old school building, a little off, but close enough. And I've lived in that house for fifty years now. And one of the first things we noticed when we moved in is that that brick wall on the back of the school is like a panarin in terms of sound. I mean, I can't say I can hear a pin drop, but if somebody drops a basketball, I hear it. In my house, I'm not trying to push. And, you know, it was, in some ways, in the early part of my being there, very lovely because my kids went to school there. And during recess and lunchtime, they'd come around back and play and laugh. That was music to our ears, really. But not so much now. I was particularly concerned, I've been out of place for a while, but about the aspirations of, well, my remarks really need to pick up on what Renee said, noise pollution, because of that effect there. And here, we're talking about music, amplified music to eleven o'clock at night. And bands inviting neighborhood bands to come and play outdoors. It's almost like it's turning things into an entertainment venue. You can't turn back the clock. This used to be, Craigsville used to be a very active mercantile area. But it has evolved to really a residential area. Even the buildings that used to be mercantile, I own one of them, it's the Mortuary, have been converted to residential issues. So, it's not a real good fit. But I can tell you this, that the conditions that I just described about the amplification of the sound coming off the back of the building affects me. But there's a cemetery, it's a shallow cemetery, my wife is very good. And I have been a frequent visitor, needless to say. But I can tell you that what the trampoline effect, it works up there as well. And I can't imagine more, something more disconcerting than visiting with your deceased and being interrupted by some event below. And to have to consult with the schedule of what's going on below before you visit, it's outrageous to think that. I drive past that road to the cemetery all the time. And do I have to go out and check my computer to see whether there's something going on there before I can stop by for a visit? Ridiculous. And my point is that if there are events scheduled that are, I don't know the definition of noise pollution, but impact the community adversely, that really is bothersome. Because speaking of a cemetery itself, as opposed to just affecting me, there are probably hundreds of people that have relatives or loved ones in that cemetery. So, the scenario that I just described not only impacts me, it impacts every visitor that tries to come to visit with their beloved. One possibility should be, or I consider, is that any of these events that fall into the neighborhood of noise pollution, there's a wonderful auditorium in the building. That's a better venue than you could probably build outside. And it's a better venue than having amplified speakers outside for eleven o'clock at night.
Thank you.
I guess my time is done.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate your briefness. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
My name is Dave Morrell. My wife and I are about a third of the mile up from this site towards Syria. We enjoy sitting out on our patio, taking in the tranquility and the serenity of this area that will be lost with all the ruckus coming right up that valley that's coming from this site. There's been extensive efforts by Madison County officials to ensure that they can get out from under this creek. to ensure that they get out from under this Kriegler'sville school. In all that, I haven't heard any effort to get fully informed on the environmental impacts of this sale decision. I'm not talking about applications of routine water, separate fields, construction, and all those regulations. I'm talking about the very real and enormous environmental repercussions. We've already heard two folks talking about them. I'm going to hit on the same topics. Madison County needs to take a picture of the current environment of Kriegler'sville. So then you compare it to the projected environment that this venue is going to create specifically. You've got hundreds of people sending on this small parcel at all hours of the day and night, and all the stuff that those 100 people are going to bring with them. You've got hundreds of cars. There's a note on the schematic overflow parking, smoke and mirrors. We know where the overflow, overflow parking is going. It's going in the front yards of the residents and on both sides of the turnpike. There's been no discussion about all these cars and the fluids they're dropping and that being rain washed into the Robinsons. Let's talk about that. Noise, you've already heard that, many forms of, of noise. This contract that's been signed mentions noise reductions. How is this enforceable if there's no noise ordinance in the county of, in Madison County? Different types of noise. You've got it coming from the vans. You've got it coming from cell phone speaker systems. You've got it coming from car stereo systems. Noise is a real concern. Voices, loud talking, yelling, arguments, coming from the pool parties, coming from the fire pit parties. There's talk about, uh, we'll remediate that with landscaping. Let's get real. That's not going to do much at all. They look pretty, but it's not. Miscellaneous noise, slamming the car doors all day long, any time of the early hours. This is what needs to be looked at. Light pollution, oh, yeah, the lights have to force down, but that's, light is emitted sideways. What is the light condition right now in Kriegler'sville? Quality of life, tranquility, serenity, privacy destroyed by this venue. Property values will plummet. There's no one in their right mind wants to live next door to a party venue. In this case, perhaps even in a stretch, an adult fraternity house. We can't, as Mr. Webb says, it is what it is. This is a party venue. So Madison needs to hear what these impacts are because you have to take responsibility when you pull the trigger. You can't just pull the trigger and say, not our deal. You have to learn what are these impacts and go from there. Flood plan, there's an indication the purchaser's going to file for a change of the map. Can do that. His application has to go through the county. The county can even concur or non-concur. If you concur, what's the message to the residents who live there? That you're going to change the flood map, you're going to put buildings in and alter the flow of water? And is that going to take items out the site downstream? Tax revenue, tax revenue is talked about. Officials are looking forward to this. But I've got to say that any dollars that come in, the Madison County coppers are coming in at the expense of the residents who live there. They're the ones that are sacrificing everything. And those, there's a certain term to, to describe that kind of money. Finally, when this process started and the contract was signed, the school building was the sole focus, as it should be. And a short time later, the bait and switch came in. And you've gone from selling the school to now having this giant mastodon over there that's already stomping around, making a scene. So we also have the county now squaring off against the residents. That all needs to be avoided and can be avoided. I really recommend that the planning commission recommend to the board that they deny this rezoning request. Let's call a timeout. Let's do all the necessary fact finding, restart the process, and involve the residents in the beginning to move forward to resolve the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, thank you.
Hello, I'm, I'm Josh Smoot. I bought the farm next door to the school. Three years ago, I poured my heart into this place. As you can tell, if anybody knows what it used to look like, what it looks like today, I put a lot of work into it. Having cabins 20 feet of my property lawn is devastating. Having, for one, I work a nine to five in New Orleans, Virginia, Monday through Friday. My farming hours is Saturday and Sunday from time to time. I know it's going to be the busiest time of this event venue. Is there going to be issues with me mowing, bush mowing, weeding, chainsawing, woodchilin', whatever, whatever the case is? The last thing I want to deal with is people who has dumped a lot of money in a wedding, is over here getting married, and now is pissed because I'm making all this noise over here. I don't want to deal with confrontation. I moved out there peacefully, quietly. I also have two young kids at the house. They're still in school. 11 o'clock amplified music at night. I mean, these, these kids go to bed at 8:30 or 9:00. So, yeah, I mean, I do, I do want to touch back on spot zoning. I know that some of your, your calls, your sections there give one covers what you would like to do. But spot zoning defines as a plan which benefits a single parcel of land by creating a zone for use just for that one parcel that's different from the surrounding property. I would say that fits in this situation. In this scenario, there's nothing else that matches this rather to what is being proposed. Not in a small town, Krieg, uh, Kriegersville village, no way. So, yeah, I'm concerned about the noise. I'm concerned about the zoning. That's all I got.
Thank you. Yes, okay, thank you.
I'm Jim Howe. I'm the other half of Possum Store. And I just want to say I support everything that's been said in negative about this development. It's not good for Kriegler'sville. You know, like the Smoots, we have a store down there. It's just a mom and pop operation. When we have music, we finish at 8:30 because we have neighbors across the street that have a young family. We have the Smoots down the road. We know something about living in a small community and trying to blend in and enhance the community and be part of it, not destroy it. That's not what I'm seeing here. I know how badly the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission want to do something with the Kriegler'sville School. You've got this wide element that you, you didn't ask for. And everybody, I'm sure you hear as many times a day as we do, what's, what's going to happen with the Kriegler'sville School? You want to see something good come out of it. But I would just say that, you know, there's that old saying that if it's too good to be true, if it looks too good to be true, it probably is, isn't, isn't true. And this is definitely the case. This is not showing any respect for the residents of Kriegler'sville. It's a quiet residential community, as Mr. McGettrick pointed out, in ways that I could never even thought of. And I think you really, really need to think long and hard about this decision. I know how difficult it is for you to sit there in the county and make these kind of decisions. And we really appreciate all the thoughts you put into it. So please really think through this because I don't think this is a good deal for Kriegler'sville and actually Madison County. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Laura Smoot. I'm Josh's wife, and that's our farm right next door to the proposed venue. So we moved here in 2020 and worked very hard to revitalize our farm, as Josh said. We've invested in being part of our small community, which is only 41 people. We did a tally the other day of who lives in our village. It's 41. And so many of them are part of the founding families of Madison County. When we moved in, the county report on the school suggested that the building was almost beyond repair. In fact, we even unofficially offered $10,000 to buy the property behind the building to expand our pasture. I also know that there were a couple other offers. For example, the Blue Ridge Baptist Church had expressed interest in purchasing. So the idea that no one in the community was interested in the property is untrue. It is unthinkable to me that the county would elect to turn the school over to an outside developer for a high-density commercial operation that is completely out of line with our town and beyond the capacity for this land. You have almost every neighbor here, certainly every immediately adjacent neighbor, telling you to say no to this rezoning. We have 225 signatures as of this afternoon on our petition, and 60 of them are property owners in our area. That petition went live two days ago. I'm going to assume that you all have read the county zoning code. But to refresh your memory, M1 Industrial Section, Article 9, has a statement of intent. It reads as follows. "The district is established to permit certain light-to-medium industrial uses near a labor supply for which satisfactory evidence is presented that such uses, either by right or special use permit, will not adversely affect any contiguous district by reason of odor, glare, smoke, dust, vibration, noise, sight, or contamination of water, air, and land. The proposed plan will absolutely adversely affect our properties with significant increases in noise, sight, and potentially water contamination. If you all approve this rezoning, you will be in violation of your own zoning ordinance." I also have read our county's comprehensive plan, and the vision statement resonates with me. Opening statement says that "As residents of Madison County, we value and wish to preserve our county's scenic beauty, the rural development, farms, forests, friendly atmosphere, balanced economy, and good schools." Please tell me how dropping a high-density commercial operation in the middle of a tiny residential farming community meets that standard. It doesn't. You know it. I know it. They know it. If the county cared about the school building, they would not have allowed it to sit for 20 years without any maintenance. At this point, the building is as close to a tear-down as it can be. Passing this dilapidated old building off to an inexperienced developer is begging for problems and is setting him and the county up for failure. If you sincerely mean to protect the native beauty and the rural communities of Madison, then you have a responsibility to vote no on this rezoning and to put strict oversight in place to ensure that any permitted development is in keeping with the needs and well-being of our hard-working, tax-paying residents. Thank you, guys. I'm terrible at public speaking, so I had to write it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Quinn. We own one of the properties that my wife and I own property just below this 1027 Old Blue's Current Life. And I just want to register our opposition to this. Can you guys hear me? My name is John Quinn. Is that better? I know it's getting late, so I'll be quick. We own the property just below this 1027. My wife and I bought this property. It's where we plan to move soon and also spend our retirement. So I'd like to lodge our opposition to this zoning change in this project based on a lot of the things that have already been said. So I won't repeat them, the noise, the traffic it's going to be, potential impact on the environment. And also, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how this is an event venue, but most of the other event venues in the county have much, are much bigger properties, not in the middle of a small village. They have, you know, I did a, a, a search for wedding venues around here. They're 50 acres, 100 acres, 300 acre properties where they're designed to handle the kind of traffic, the volume of people, without disruption to the people that live around there. And I just think that this property, if it was going to be, if, you know, if it was a small hotel or inn, that's fine. An event venue doesn't fit in with Kriegler'sville, the, the neighborhood, the town. And it really is going to disrupt, as everybody's already made good points, the, the quality of life and the way that this place has been for a long time and the reason that we selected to move here. So once again, thank you, and I appreciate you taking our thoughts into consideration as you make this decision.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Peter Malley, I'm also a resident, nearby resident, just off Quaker Run. And just wanted to make two points. First of all, the very first question Mr. Elliott asked about the fact that this could only be used for three days, and then it was going to have to rest for four days. And it seemed like we got a response that reducing from 11 cabins to seven cabins was going to somehow make a difference. But I doubt that's going to make much of a difference at all. I think the soil, I mean, I defer to the expert in the room, but it seemed to me mostly it's going to have to do with 150 people who are at weddings, the 20 rooms in the school, the eight-bedroom house, et cetera, et cetera. You think about that in percentage terms, honestly, I'd make a very huge difference at all. I also just want to really underscore what a couple of people have already mentioned. There was a petition that went live online literally two days ago. Over 200 people have signed that in the last couple of days. The assertion, rather disingenuous, I might add, that loads of people in the community are excited about this thing is total rubbish. I completely, completely do not support this. I don't know anybody who does support it. And I want to just say finally that the kinds of businesses that have been developed with Possum Store, what the Smoots have done, that's what we need in our local community. This we do not need. And then finally, it, you know, these type of wedding venues, which I have some experience with that. I have a daughter who got married at an outdoor wedding not too long ago. I'm aware of what those are like. I'm aware of the infrastructure that's required, trucks coming through, the vans getting set up. That may be appropriate on a 100-acre parcel where you can sort of, you know, mitigate with neighbors nearby. But for, I mean, if anyone aren't familiar with what this property looks like, it's a small, small property with immediate neighbors, and it's just absolutely the wrong idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susannah Spencer. I don't live in Kriegler'sville, but I would go there often as a member of the Electoral Board up until recently. And that area, we, we were afraid we were going to have to close down the precinct for emergency reasons because of flooding a couple of years ago. It was almost up to the main road. And I know that nowadays, these floods happen at more and more increasing levels. 100 mile, 100-year floods are now happening every year in some communities. And I know that flood not too long ago was so powerful that a woman was swept away and she wound up in the Henry Valley. And there were hay bales that had just gone across the fences in Henry Valley, close to where I live. But I'm concerned about the environmental impact. A lot of the aspects of people wanting to see development is to bring in tax dollars, to bring in economic mobility. But has something been done to, to test or to rate to what extent having a trout stream right there, what its value is? Because that's protected habitat, and I hope that it will continue to be protected habitat. That's a very valuable asset for that community that would probably suffer with a lot of development. And I, and I really wonder about them. And they talk about the soil science and everything. That's very shallow flood plain there. And that it would not be too unfeasible, in terms of my imagination, that it could be overrun by heavy waters. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Better? Okay. My name is Ashley Kyle. I am a land use attorney, and I represent Mr. Shapiro on this project. Thank you for hearing us tonight. Thank you to everyone that has come and expressed concerns. Thank you. I, I hear you. Mr. Shapiro hears you. I have young kids, too. I, I get it. I, I'm listening to everything. I'm taking notes, and I, everything that you're saying is, is really resonating. There are a couple of things that I would like to point out. One, just being that not necessarily all of the events that Mr. Shapiro is thinking of are going to be law- that Mr. Shapiro is thinking of are going to be large-scale events. The business plan also includes corporate events, birthday parties, things that will be smaller during the day and not noisy. Also, the weddings, again, I hear you about the large crowds at night potentially. But when you're talking about density and all of, and hundreds of people overrunning the village, it's weddings are short. I mean, they're just for a couple of hours. I mean, it's not, this amount of cabins and rooms, they aren't going to be able to house all of the wedding guests. So, it's not like you're going to have people staying there overnight. I know, I get it, I see some looks, I get it, and I hear you. But, and, you know, just some things to think about. The noise, we are going to proffer to a designated representative that can be contacted at any time during an event. Pick up the phone, call this person, and say, hey, I'm having a problem, it's too loud, shut it down, or we need to do something. And also, the public calendar that will be available for you to see when the events are. I will definitely, as someone spoke, I believe it was the first person that spoke, mentioned construction. I will definitely talk to my client about adding some construction proffers. That's a very standard, construction proffers are very standard for something like this. So, I hear you about that. I guess the last thing I really want to say, though, is that the elementary school, from everything that I've heard, I've been hearing, I've been coming down now for a couple of months, and I've been listening to everyone. And it does sound like the elementary school is a very central part of your village. It's a beautiful building, and you have someone here that is willing to purchase it and to pay for the care and maintenance of it. That's not cheap. That's to care for the exterior maintenance and everything of this historic building that your community does value is very expensive. And rehabilitating it and maintaining it is definitely a public benefit. And just to address spot zoning just for a minute, spot zoning doesn't occur when the rezoning serves an identifiable public benefit, which rehabilitation of that, of the school building would be, and also a complement to some of the other projects that I'm hearing about that are going on down here, like the Swinging Bridge Project and just other restorative projects in the Crevelersville Village. It's a public benefit, and so that negates the spot zoning. Again, I hear you. My client and I are going to talk and try to figure out ways that perhaps we can proffer other things to relieve some of your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think everyone's already probably heard enough from me tonight or throughout this week, so I'll keep it short. I would just merely like to say, I've been called many things in my life. A mastodon has never been one of them. So, I'm excited to be able to add that to the list. I certainly don't see what we're building as an adult fraternity house. I think y'all think I'm a whole lot cooler than I am. But I do hope what we're trying to build in Crevelersville will be a community asset and a place where everyone feels welcome, however they feel about it at the start. I will just merely say, because I think, I owe it to the folks who have reached out to me. It is uncomfortable to get up in front of a crowd such as this one and express a contrary opinion, but that does not mean contrary opinions don't exist. Many, many folks and many, many longtime residents of the community have reached out to say how excited they are about the project. And while I can appreciate, you know, that there are contrary opinions, and I want to do everything I can to get you all on board. I just think this issue is maybe not as one-sided as has previously been presented. So, thank y'all for your time, and thank you all for your comments. I know they come from a place of love for Crevelersville and for the school, and I share that love. And so, excited to work with y'all on the project going forward.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I feel very ill. I had COVID shot this afternoon, and I'm feeling very weak. But I
Your name, please.
I have to speak up.
Your name. Your name, please.
First of all, the irony of all this, I won't go into my own experiences, but I have, my name is Bonnie Dixon, yes, and I live on the other side of the river. I'd like to compliment everyone. This is the first time I've actually felt there's a democratic process going on here, and my county has some good leadership. In the past, I've had nothing but bad experiences in this room. I felt I came into this room with people already sitting here who were going to just be against anything that I tried to do or care about. I hope it's going to sink into everyone that different things bother different people. I hear gunshots a lot behind me on my own property, it sounds like, without anybody telling me they're there. I'm afraid to go into my own property in the back for that reason very often. Oh, and then there are dogs. Dogs are loud, and they also chase people. And they also can come right up on your property and make it impossible for you to even use your own property unless you drive a car around that you can get in to rescue yourself as they come after you. That's been my experience of this county. Thank you very much. Nevertheless, I love this place. I have the most beautiful view in the world. I have many wonderful neighbors. I can't imagine where I would want to go rather than being here. And it's really difficult, living in an old house and trying to make everything work, but it's worth it to me for these reasons. And I would just like to remind all of us that the things we do affect one another in different ways and be aware that we have to have our boundaries, we have to have our limits. I would love for this school to, the school building itself, to be restored in some way, and the memories that people have of how much they loved the time they spent here to be somehow incorporated into the community. So, I am still hoping that there will be some kind of middle ground that we could arrive on. I agree with all the things people have said about it being overextended. But as far as the building itself of the old school, I would love to have some of the ideas that have been brought forth and come to fruition with that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ellen Early, and I'm one of the neighbors. I live back behind the cemetery. But I wanted to clarify, Mr. Shapiro thinks so many of the county residents are for it. I think he's probably talked to county residents that are not neighbors of the school. And obviously, those residents would be all for it. Also, I think a lot of the residents do not know in the county that it's changed from renovating the school to adding all the cabins and everything in the back. And I really, I really don't think the rest of the county is aware of that. And I just wanted to clarify that, because I think a lot of people are for it, because they were thinking the school was being renovated. Well, the school may never be renovated if you wait four years. And that's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, thank you. We still have several more things to go through here. Let's see, we've already gone through Good Hope Baptist Church potential application. We have Mr. Ahmed Helmy has applied for a special use permit to operate an event venue on A-one agricultural zone parcels in the A-one zoning district. An event venue uses allowable by special use permit and required to adhere to Articles fourteen-eighteen through fourteen-eighteen point four of the zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to allow an entire thirty-eight-point-six-acre parcel and a roughly twenty-acre portion of adjoining parcel to be utilized for the following uses: up to seventy individual short-term rental units consisting of a mixture of cabins and glamping units, a single structure containing a lodge, restaurant, and wellness center, a maintenance-housekeeping building, and an employee housing building. This applicant has proffered a conceptual site layout design and eliminated large-scale outdoor events as an allowable use. The thirty-eight-point-six-acre parcel does not have a postal address, but is located on Ford Shop Road, Route six-eighteen, and roughly one thousand three hundred twenty-five feet from the intersection of Ford Shop Road and Beantown Road, Route six-thirty-two. The adjoining twenty-acre portion of a parcel has a postal address of six-three-eight Ford Shop Road, Copper River, Virginia. Parcels are identified on Madison County's tax maps as forty-two-nine-teen and forty-two-nine-teen D. Ligon, do you have anything to add there?
So, you have the revised site plan that shows the extra twenty acres, the thirty-eight acres plus the twenty, or fifty acres. I'm working on a condition letter, just been kind of busy. So, I know that we will have a draft. I'd like to send it out. You know, it will obviously be in the next packet, the public hearing scheduled for November second. But many of the conditions that we talked about with Crevelersville, you know, talking about no discharge into the stream at the site plan level, having VDOT review the entrance. Ahmed has already talked to VDOT, been in conversations, they are aware. You do have good site distance. I want to get a detail on those, kind of this accessory facilities. I get a square footage as a condition. The total maximum occupancy, I think we're looking at twenty-eight. But the proposal is for twenty-eight potential two bedrooms, up to five occupancy and forty-two two-person occupancy. So, there'll be a list of conditions that, again, it's been on my to-do list, but it's just been hard to get to. So, we'll definitely have a pretty near-finished product by the next workshop. Of course, on Saturday, for those who are interested to walk the site, if I did put it as a meeting on our website, and they've notified all the local media and all that, and I've talked to some residents, we will meet there at one o'clock on Saturday. And it's just a site visit. You're welcome to come if you just want to see the site and walk it. And Ahmed will be there and be able to answer any questions that you may have on the site. I guess the big piece of this is that he has done some soil, sort of like with the last applicant. And I'll let him explain that a little more. But otherwise, you know, conditions before you and within a month. Site visit Saturday, if three of you come, you know, that's why we advertised it, because there are three or more, please feel welcome to come. And I'll be there early, so you'll see where to park. Other than that, you know, again, moving forward for a special use hearing, I will notice that we do have, you know, we get asked about the consent and things like that from the owners. One of the conditions would be if this special use permit were granted, a boundary line adjustment would come in to take that twenty acres in. So, you would have, again, the fifty-eight acre parcel. So, any questions for me or for the applicant right now?
It's, yes, Mike.
So, is the, is your sewer basically kind of, is it all based upon the same thing that we're doing?
So, we did a soil study with a team of boys across the property. And based on the soil study, it was verified that we can
Would you mind giving Mike, yes?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, so based on the soil study that we did, it was verified that we can use the property for alternative systems. Five of the seven can go alternative engineer system just because of the size of, you know, the amount of gallons that need to be treated. And two of these sites will be more of a drip system. But, so accordingly, we do not need to discharge in any stream. It's going to be an engineer system with leach fields. No package plants, no need for discharging in any stream. So, I think that was one big concern that the planning commission raised, and that's why we did the soil study.
Were any of those sites going to be down towards the river at all? Or is it going to be all up in the
No, sir. Yeah, we did not do any tests in the floodplain at all. So, it's all in the property itself, far from the river.
I have a question concerning that, too. I looked at what they said the soil horns were here, and I guess the reason we went to alternative it is the soil wasn't suitable for convention. And if we use an adrip system, we discharge it on top of the ground through a drip system, correct?
So, the reason I opted for a package plant in the beginning was I was assuming the worst case, and I never tested the soil before. That's the first time we tested soil. So, the soil does perk and it perks well. We have enough depth in the soil to create conventional systems. The reason we're going to engineer system is because of the size of, I mean, with seventeen thousand gallons a day. So, it is engineer system because of that. But these are your typical leach fields, alternative systems, nothing beyond that. And of course, they will have to be approved by the health department.
And There's a piece of paper that I have that they're all alternative system drip system.
No, no, sir. Five of them are not drip systems, only if we need, so when they tested, seven sites did perk and are, do have the capacity for the seventeen thousand gallons across these seven. Based on the soil study, two of them might need drip systems. Drip systems is basically regulating the flow, nothing more. You just regulate the flow that goes in the leach field, and you filter it. So, it slows down the flow.
Yeah, but in a drip system, it leaches out on top of the ground.
No.
Clean water.
No.
And it's sand bear.
It's, a drip system basically regulates the flow, and then it goes, that's it.
Any other questions at this point? It sounds like we're still waiting for a lot more information, and hopefully, on Saturday, we may have some, a chance to look at everything and talk to you more.
So, there was, if you give me just, I know, I know, just ten minutes. There were some other questions that were raised that I just did a short presentation to answer them. It's just ten minutes, and we can discuss it later on Saturday if you want. So, I'll just go up there. Can I go to the next slide, please? So there was a question about how will the hard-sided cabins look? So on, on the left side, these are your typical canvas tents. On the right side, these are your hard-sided cabins. So they really look like a tent, but they're hard-sided, they're insulated cabins. So that was one question that the planning commission did have. So I just wanted to show you a picture of, of these hard-sided units. There was a question related to who are our guests and what's their profile? So, I mean, these, the average age is around 45. Majority are millennials and Gen X, averaging around $160,000. On average, they spend around $300 per day on dining and shopping. Mostly, they live in DC and other nearby major metropolitan areas. There was a question about operations and occupancy rates. So although the maximum occupancy would be 224, based on 42 two-pack units and 28 five-pack units, yet based on experience, those two packs units are, I mean, on, these are averages, of course, 1.5 per unit. And usually, the five packs would be around 3.75 per unit. So in reality, I mean, we, based on our, these are projections. These are the occupancy rates from April through November, and that's the projected number of guests per day. So I just want to share this, and these, these are projections based on, based on experience and other, other similar glamping properties. So, yeah, on another treatment, just we, we did discuss the soil studies. So we don't need to, unless there are any other questions. But I shared with Ligon the soil study, and I mean, you, you can definitely access it at any point. Next one, please. In terms of well testing, there was, there was a question about the aquifer and how are we impacting it? We will be conducting yield tests, and that's obligated by the health department. And these yield tests will determine the sustainable rate at which the well will produce water and also select the appropriate pump size and pipe. We're assuming we will need two to three wells on this property. And basically, the ground, the groundwater will be pumped to the maintenance building where the treatment disinfection storage tank and pressure maintenance equipment will be located. Next one, please. That is initial, just traffic analysis that we did. We need 445 feet each, you know, each direction for side distance. And we, we got the side distance, and we might need just minimum grading on the property if there's a concern from VDOT. In terms of traffic, next one, please. In terms of traffic generation, that is based on, we, we did a traffic analysis, and it's based on the 10th edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So, I mean, that, that is an official study, assuming a campground use and assuming that the restaurant would be open to the public. We're assuming in the AM peak hour around 33 vehicles and in the PM hour around 55. Again, assuming that's a campground and that the restaurant will be open to the public. And thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, do we have, yes, Pete?
I got a question for Ligon. Ligon, this says it's tax map 4219. You said on boundary adjustments, we'd be done to add the other property to it. So that other piece of property is a different tax map?
4219A.
It's 4219A, but it's a different tax map?
That's right.
So how are we having one submit on two different tax map numbers?
I mean, that's what the application's for. That's what, that's what they've applied for. That's what, we've got consent from both owners to do so. I mean.
If you're applying on one tax map and you want to put stuff on another tax map, is that legal, Sean?
It, it tends to present some problems. I mean, I think the cleaner way to do it is advertise both tax map classes.
Yeah, we, we did. We've advertised the, all of the 38 acres and 28 and 20 acres. I think it's on the advertising, isn't it?
All right, it says on your tax map number 42-19, on the piece of paper that I have.
Okay, well, this hadn't gone in the paper yet, but I'm, yeah, good, I'm glad you saw that. I'll. Yeah. When you write a lot, sometimes you'll.
Hey, any other? Yes, Francois.
What's the separation, the distance between these cabins?
Minimum 50 feet between each cabin, between, between each tent. That would be the minimum.
Okay, so from.
Check it.
On side of the.
From, from the edge.
No, I didn't.
He's just comparing the size of the room.
Up, so 50 feet will be.
It's, it's probably roughly the same, yeah.
From one wall to the other, yeah.
I guess we could count some of them.
Counting some of them.
Yeah.
So 35 centavol. Did we have, was there a. Do we have a, if you were gonna, are you gonna have live music or anything on this as well?
So there will be a profile, no amplified music on the property.
Okay. I thought that's what you said.
Yep.
Do we, do we need to bring in any noise things on this after, after 10 o'clock or?
Yeah, I think, again, we're going to write the conditions, but no amplified music. We're also going to say no out, so even though it's an event venue, there's not going to be any, like, for the general public to come, you know, it would just be, any event would be just for the residents, and there will be no amplified music. So, I mean, just for the guests, not residents, but.
That, that 255 people I saw that you had listed for all this, is that, and I thought you said that was based on other sites. Is that your calculation for your site as well?
Yep, yep. So, yeah, these are, this is how we base the, the financial projections, based on these occupancy rates.
Nathan?
Yeah. Just want to clarify something from a meeting probably like six ago. Who would be developing, like, actually developing this? Would that be you, or are you gonna?
So, so, I mean, previously, I, I, I got the pack, I packaged the land and I sold it to another getaway. In this case, honestly, until I get the permit, it could be me in a partnership with another developer or it could be another developer that has to abide by the process of this, of, of the special use permit. But usually, I start the conversations once I get the special use permit. But I mean, there is a good chance that I'll be involved in this about.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Helmy?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we, some of us at least, will see you Saturday probably.
Okay. Next item on our discussion is Laos, Luth, Luth Callan. Callan Renewables LLC has applied to rezone a 91.8 acre A1 agriculture zone parcel to M1 industrial to develop a solar farm. In the M1 zoning district, a solar farm is allowable by special use permit. Solar farms are required to adhere to Articles 14-19.1, Commercial Solar Energy Facilities through 14-19-3 of the county zoning ordinance. If rezoned to M1, a subsequent public hearing for a special use permit will be entertained. The 91.9 acre parcel is located on South Seminole Trail, US 29 North, but does not contain a postal address. The parcel adjoins where Yoder's Country Market is located. The subject parcel is identified on Madison County's tax map as 48-12. And since these two things are tied together, shall I just go ahead and read the next section too? Laos Callan Renewables LLC has applied for a special use permit to develop a solar farm on a 91.8 acre M1 zone parcel. In the M1 zoning district, a solar farm is allowable by special use permit. A solar facility siting agreement accompanies this special use permit application consisting of mutually agreeable terms and conditions between the applicant and the county. This includes, but is not limited to, the following items. Project features, conditions, mitigations, decommissioning, rights of entry and enforcement, revenue sharing payments, mutual covenants, covenants and successors or assignees. Nathan, do you have a, the rest of this?
Yeah.
Can I borrow that? Thanks. The 91.9 acre parcel is located on South Seminole Trail, US Route 29, but does not contain a postal address. The parcel adjoins where Yoder's Country Market is located. Subject parcel is identified on Madison County's tax map as 48-12C. Now, I'm gonna need that later too. All right. I lost that page somewhere.
Oh, yeah, Ligon, this area. Yeah, the, first, we, we, we'll have to get the application. So that, that should be, I'll get that early next week. This is scheduled for November 2nd. They did provide an informational thing on solar recycling of the panels. I put, from Sussex County, Virginia, a siting agreement, which I think could be a good example of what is, what, what we should probably model a siting agreement after. So by the next workshop, we'll have the siting agreement. I, I need to have a, a conversation again with Commissioner Revenue. We, again, we need to decide, again, if this is something that the planning commission and board is inclined to approve. And I, I don't want to make any assumptions, but, you know, whether the revenue sharing or they're just a straight machinery tools tax is a preferred revenue model. It seems to me that the revenue, I know Brian, that Daniel has, I'm sure he has that schedule we could look at to see what, what is a better revenue scheme. If you do do the revenue sharing, the $1,400 a kilowatt annual, you just have to adopt an ordinance, and I included in the model ordinance of that. So from my perspective, get the application, get a draft siting agreement, and make a determination. I don't know if it has to come particularly at the rezoning or special use permit, you know, by November 2nd. And again, that is, you know, assuming that this is something that would, 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 would gain approval. Other than that, I think there are some representatives, maybe someone on the go-to meeting. Mr. Beal wants, wants, wants to speak with you.
Okay, but any questions for Ligon before we? There were a couple of items that came up the last time. Several of the planning commission members were interested in seeing the agreement with Rappahannock Electric. We want to kind of understand where that goes. And also, the, the location of this proposed power line to take the power to the substation. Those are questions that were raised, and I haven't heard anything in addition to that.
Yep, here's an agreement. I think I passed some out. If you don't have one.
Is that in the packet?
Yeah, I just got it today.
Oh, okay. So we do have those, okay. So we have several of these, okay. Okay, there, there was some concern about where that new power line would be located too. So I, I noticed we don't have the engineer here tonight, do we?
Engineer online?
Oh, she's online.
I'm actually online.
Is that a response?
Yeah, you can, I think you can ask any question to the engineer?
Yes, we, we were asking about the location of the power line to carry the power from the solar facility to the substation.
Certainly, so the studied route, the route that Rappahannock studied, they studied a couple of different routes. We have not looked at the overland route, which would go off of kind of the southern side to Fairground Road. That has not been studied, so that's going to have to be something to talk to Rappahannock with. And I think that was the preferred method. The other route that has been studied that, at the current moment, is the route that we would probably go with, would be back up 29. And then down the closest road that I think is on kind of the southwest of, of Yoder's, up to Fairground Road and then to the substation. So that is the current route that has been studied, that has been selected. And we still have some additional studies that have to take place with Rappahannock. I spoke with them specifically. There's a, another round of study that they want to do. We had a feasibility study, which I do believe you have a copy of. And you have a copy of the agreement to sign to do that study. We have chosen to go ahead and move forward based on findings. And we can bring up the additional route with Rappahannock now that we are moving into an impact study. So it, that is a potential, but I want to make sure that everybody understands that it's going to be based on evaluation through Rappahannock, and it's not something that we can just say, hey, we want to go this route. But it, there's feasibility, things that have to be looked at electrically for Rappahannock to give that the okay. Plus, making sure that the, the use of, of that easement is okay with the, the landowner that's to the south of the site.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have, yes, Francois?
What's the relationship between Luth Callan Renewables and South Seminole Trail Solar?
That's, it's, that's the project LLC. So that pro, that LLC, South Seminole Trail Solar, was set up by Luth Callan for the project.
Was this, was the power line that's going to take the power from the substation, was it ever planned to go north on 29?
That was an additional route, and it would have gone up and around the school and then down Fairground.
Well, I'll give you my opinion, man. That's bad.
Exactly, so that's not, we, we looked, yeah, we, we've looked at that route, and it was, it was looked at by Rappahannock and economically and the distance posed some additional challenges. So the shorter of the two routes was the one that was outlined earlier.
So at this point, the, basically, the route is up to Rappahannock Electric, is that correct?
Well, I mean, we can, and I'll be honest with you and tell you, I think it would be easiest and shortest distance to go the, I'll, I'll call it the quote-unquote overland route that has been discussed specifically by the board in the last meeting. It's, that definitely would be the easiest, and that would be, and that would have a favorable, that would be favorable for us to, to go that route. If for some reason can't, the other route is, works as well.
Thank you. Any other question? No other questions? Public comment? And, no, and, and if you would, please, let's, let's go with the three-minute as well, it's getting late.
No problem.
Thank you.
We've, let's say, we've talked about most of these things. Most recent concerns, the map that was provided most recently in this current iteration, it looks like it covers far greater than 80% of the site. Ordinance says that the site should be limited to 80%. But beyond all that, I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. Really comes down to a zoning issue. And honestly, a lot of the spot zoning arguments that came up would be. would be the Quigleyville project would apply to this one. I do wanna ask a specific question, Mr. Carpenter. We had exchanged some information earlier. Did you go back and review it?
Yes, I've looked at that, yeah.
Okay. Did you share it with the rest of the planning commission?
I think most people have seen some of it anyway, but no, I haven't specifically forwarded it to them, no.
Okay. The board either?
I think the board has seen some of it, too.
All right.
They're aware of that.
No problem. We'll make sure that information gets out, copy everybody on it, just so that way we can hit all the highlights and some of the major concerns here. A question I have, let's say, has the planning commission asked questions in regard to the hazardous material handling of these things going forward? A lot of these things are being, these panels are being reclassified. Let's say by the, trying to pull it up. Let's say by all of our regulatory agencies as hazardous materials. They're being treated as such. Also, the regulations have changed in accounting these panels as impervious area and contributing to stormwater runoff. So if we're gonna cover the maximum amount of site with this stuff, and it's all, you know, eighty percent is gonna be impervious area and contributing to stormwater runoff, I don't see how that's a feasible plan. And on top of that, nobody yet has been able to tell me why this is a good idea for our county at all. But we can discuss that further as we go, and let's say we'll go from there. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? Okay, thank you. The remaining items are kind of just planning commission-related. The twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plan review committee assignments. Ligon, have you got any?
Yeah, I think that, I know the next, I anticipate we're pretty busy for a while. You know, talking about February meetings now with people. So I think the best way to do this is if, and we can maybe, you know, talk about this at the public hearing, put it as a side agenda item, is maybe get a group of four or five planning commissioners that don't mind meeting, you know, having a couple extra meetings a month, or at least an extra meeting a month of myself and Jennifer, and then working through this, and then at least every other month, but probably once a month, just reporting, this is where we're at, to the whole commission, to the board, the public. What do you think? You know, are we in the right direction? Should we go? And I think that would probably be the most efficient, as opposed to doing two groups. And, you know, if we weren't as busy as we were, I'd say, hey, do two groups and maybe you meet. But if we could find four, at least four, that would willing to volunteer. It's not to have four people dominate that, you know, group, but just to work on it and bring things back to the commission as a whole and say, hey, this is the goals, objectives, and let's have every other month have a good meeting where we can kinda work through those things. So if that's, works for everyone, I say we nominate the people around here.
Good start. Let's, a little more practically. How about if I ask for, you know, just volunteers email me if you wanted to do this, and if we get four or five people, great, yeah. Just drop me an email, and I will forward the names to Ligon.
Yeah.
And we'll arrange the first, try to arrange the first name.
And it will, and really, the key is to keep everyone in the loop from this committee.
Yeah, okay. All right. I know we have a brief follow-up discussion on ADUs.
We're really, we're gonna make this brief. So, as you guys know, I was the one that brought it up to the board, definitely reviewed.
I don't like people saying that.
Yeah, used the microphone.
Carlton, yeah, I'll, Virginia. No, I'll, so I was the one that asked the board if they favored getting the planning commission to make a recommendation on the accessory dwelling unit. So, yeah, that was me. And I, so at this point, I mean, I don't even know how Mr. Jackson feels, but I still want a recommendation from the planning commission. And whether that is to pass along what has been written up as a possible ordinance, or whether you all just tell the board, we've looked at it, and we don't recommend you even considering it, that's for y'all to decide. But with that said, I've written this up, and I wanna pass it out and let y'all read it. Two pages, read the accessory dwelling unit side first, and just absorb that. And this is just my opinion, none of the other board members are in on this. And I think.
Okay. I'm sure he wants to.
It was just my thoughts and stuff, so. Max, I got one left. Sharon? No, I didn't do this one over here. So I just wanted to ask you guys to read what I've written here, and it references what that purpose and intent on the back. Many of our ordinances have a, begin with a purpose and intent. And I noted, nobody, the biggest, one of the biggest rubs was was the not having a owner occupied. So like I was talking to Pete about it, it's still a special use permit, but then what gives the planning commission and the board the, what am I trying to say? The ability to say yes to one applicant and no to another applicant? So that's where I came up with this purpose and intent. And, I don't know, just review that and see if that'll work. If that's, if that was the biggest rub on the ADUs. Also, I don't know, I woke up this morning and with this thing in my head, and I looked it up immediately. In ag zone, not in conservation, but in the ag zone, there is a special use permit for duplex. Check that out, and then read the answer. And I called Jamie Wilks, and I said, 'cause it has a semi-detached. And I said, okay, what does that mean? He says, okay, well, it's like a breezeway, okay? You build another house and make it a breezeway. I said, so I could do this and take a sixteen-foot two-by-four and put a nail in each end, and have you come out there? And he goes, that would be detached. And then soon as you leave, I knock the nails out and, you know, take it down. So, I mean, there is another avenue, it looks like.
And that's my special use permit, right?
That is a special use permit, yeah, in A1. It's not in C1 for some reason, but whatever. So you guys would just look at this, you know, keep it handy at home and read it over, and we'll talk about it later, I'm tired.
Thank you. All right, following up on that, are there any additional items from the planning commission or the public?
Yes, question?
Oh, dear.
Six point four, site plan, is it possible to get a copy of that?
The?
The flat? The Hemet Road site plan for the four courses?
Yeah, the flat.
Oh, it's actually, oh, okay. I can give you a whole packet here, it's in there. Yeah. Yeah, we have extra packets.
Okay.
That's the, that's the, the, the.
Okay. These chairs are getting hard. Any other additional items? All right, can I hear a motion for adjournment, please? Second? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
We've had longer planning commission meetings.
Yeah, three hours is pretty good, though.